Committee on Education and Labor will come to order. Welcome, everyone. I know the quorum is present and the committee is meeting today in a legislative hearing to hear testimony on Brown v. Board of Education at sixty-five, a promise unfulfilled. Today, we're here to discuss our responsibility to fulfill the promise of educational equity, which was ordered sixty-five years ago in the Supreme Court's landmark decision in Board, uh, Brown v. Board of Education. On May seventeenth, nineteen fifty-four, the Supreme Court unanimously rejected the doctrine of separate but equal and struck down lawful school segregation in America. In the court's opinion, Chief Justice Earl Warren wrote the following: "In these days, it is doubtful that any child may reasonably be expected to succeed in life if denied the opportunity of an education. Such an opportunity, where the state has undertaken to provide it, is a right which must be made available to all on equal terms." He went on to say that "in the field of public education, the doctrine of separate but equal has no place. Separate educational facilities are inherently unequal." But the court's historic ruling was not the end of school segregation. It was the beginning of a long and difficult struggle to unwind centuries of systemic inequality that have influenced every aspect of American life. Today's inequity in education, housing, economic opportunity, criminal justice, and other areas are the legacy of our history. Rather than seeking to forget the wounds of the past, we must confront them, and the federal government actually contributed to racial segregation and inequity, and so the federal government must be part of the solution. Evidence and experience demonstrate that when we accept our responsibility to desegregate schools, we have the power to do so. The passage of the Civil Rights Act and the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, paired with strong federal enforcement of the Supreme Court's mandate to desegregate schools, produced a period of sustained progress from the late nineteen sixties through nineteen eighties. The share of black students attending majority-white schools jumped from roughly zero percent to more than forty percent. Segregation does not just isolate people, it isolates opportunity. A recent report found that there is currently a twenty-three billion-dollar racial funding gap between school districts serving students of color and school districts serving predominantly white students. The relationship between integration and resources is often overlooked but cannot be overstated. Court-ordered desegregation not only substantially reduced racial segregation, it also led to a dramatic increase in per pupil spending, an average increase of more than twenty percent per student. As a result, test scores for black students improved, the achievement gap narrowed. Integration does not work because children of color are incapable of achieving without peers. Integration works because it impacts school spending and school practices. Even Stanford professor Derek Henshaw, a consistent critic of federal investment as a solution to challenges in education, found that the period of federal investment, coupled with strong enforcement of desegregation, produced impressive learning gains for children of color without adversely affecting white students. Just as we have demonstrated the power to fix the problem, we have the demonstrated power to make it worse. The election of President Nixon started a steady retreat from federal enforcement of school desegregation, which was continued by Presidents Reagan and first President Bush. More importantly, conservatives recognize that the same institution that started the movement towards school desegregation could be used to stop it. Starting in nineteen sixty-nine, Republican presidents appointed the next eleven Supreme Court justices, and in fact, all but four of the last nineteen Supreme Court judges since nineteen sixty-nine have been appointed by Republicans. They've been able to form a bloc of conservatives who question the constitutionality of desegregation, chipping away at the federal government's ability to compel bold, meaningful strategies to fully integrate schools. For example, a few years ago, when districts in Kentucky and Washington State wanted to voluntarily desegregate their schools, the Supreme Court said no. Rather than standing firmly in support of school diversity, members of Congress of both parties bowed to political pressure and passed legislation that was intended to undermine school desegregation. One example was the appropriations rider that started in the nineteen seventies that prohibited the use of federal funds for transportation of students for the purpose of school integration. That rider was just removed last year. After four decades without federal support for desegregation, we're right back where we started. A twenty-sixteen GAL report found that public schools had grown more segregated by race and class than any time since nineteen sixty. According to the GAL, high-poverty schools, where seventy-five to one hundred percent of the students were low-income and black or Latino, increased from nine percent of the public schools in two thousand to sixteen percent in twenty thirteen. At sixteen percent of public schools were both, where the students are both low-income and black and Hispanic, at least seventy-five percent of those students are black and Hispanic and low-income, and they said it's getting worse. It's not surprising. The report also found that the segregated schools offered demonstrably worse opportunity for quality education. Unfortunately, the key ingredients that combined to unwind our progress towards educational equity are still in place today. We have a conservative Supreme Court that is likely to strike down school diversity's policies as to approve them, and an administration that does not promote diversity and equity in education. One of Secretary DeVos's first actions as Secretary of Education was to eliminate the grant program called the Opening Doors and Expanding Opportunities Grant Program, a voluntary program to support school districts in creating locally-driven strategies to increase school diversity and improve student achievement and equity of educational opportunity for disadvantaged students. That program would have helped local jurisdictions develop desegregation plans that could withstand constitutional challenges. In the two-and-a-half years since, the Department of Education has rescinded an Obama guidance that provided recommendations to schools seeking to boost diversity in classrooms and campuses. It tried to delay the implementation of the long overdue rule designed to address racial disparities in identification placement and discipline of children of color with disabilities. Recent court decisions found that attempt to be illegal. Dismissed more than twelve hundred civil rights investigations that were started under the Obama administration. It produced a final school safety report that cited bogus research and blamed federal civil rights enforcement without evidence for school shootings, and eliminated a twenty-fourteen guidance package that was issued to help students address clear, to help schools address the clear evidence that black boys and students with disabilities received harsher treatments than their classmates in punishments. They received harsher punishments, and the guidance showed how you could reduce those disparities without jeopardizing school safety. As the White House and courts continue to push us in the wrong direction, Congress cannot sit on the sidelines. The stakes are too high. Beneath all the slogans and soundbites, there's a simple fact, that desegregating schools is the most powerful tool we have to improve the lives of children of color and their families. Evidence shows that the racial achievement gap can be virtually eliminated just by exposing black students to desegregated schooling. One report considered the most rigorous and comprehensive to date showed that black students who attended desegregated schools throughout their K through twelve career were more likely to graduate from high school, attend college, attend a more selective school, and complete college. Benefits are not nearly limited to academics. Just five years of attending court-ordered desegregated schools significantly increased black workers' earnings and significantly reduced their likelihood of experiencing poverty. Attending desegregated schools, starting in elementary school, is highly correlated with reduced chances of adult incarceration. These statistics reveal both the incredible value of desegregating schools and the tragic reality that we have failed to do so. Just how many children have been disadvantaged because of our failure to desegregate the schools? How many adults have been incarcerated? How many families have been impoverished just because we have failed to uphold a Supreme Court decision rendered sixty-five years ago? How many more will we lose until that promise is kept? Our witnesses today, as our witnesses today will discuss, the work of desegregating schools and protecting students' civil rights will not be easy. Addressing Americans' legacy of racial discrimination is uncomfortable and complicated, and as if we don't have enough to deter members of this institution, it can be unpopular. But the civil rights movement has shown that we can change public opinion rather than just waiting for it to change. Today, eighty-five percent of Americans say that Martin Luther King made things better for black Americans. But in nineteen sixty-six, a Gallup survey showed that two-thirds of Americans had an unfavorable opinion of Dr. King. Two years later, in the immediate aftermath of his assassination, another survey found that thirty-one percent of Americans felt that he had brought it on himself. If our approach is to wait until it's popular and easy, we'll never do what's right, and generations of students and communities will be robbed of the opportunity to reach their full potential. Today, we can and will discuss the benefits and trade-offs of various proposals for achieving educational equity, but the premise of the discussion is not open to debate. Public education is not a private commodity. It is a public good. The federal government is obligated to ensure, just as Justice Warren wrote, "that it is made available to all on equal terms." And I yield to the ranking member, Dr. Fox, for the purpose of an opening statement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I thank you for yielding. It is clear that in your, as a result of your very long opening statement, that you care passionately about this issue, and I will tell you I care passionately about it also. Thank you for convening today's hearing to talk about the Supreme Court's landmark decision in Brown v. Board of Education. The issue of segregation in schools deserves our full attention, and I welcome this opportunity to discuss how the turning point of Brown v. Board has shaped the last sixty-five years for students across the United States. Thanks to the relentless courage of Linda Brown, her parents, and civil rights leaders, the abhorrent segregationist policy of, quote, "separate but equal," end quote, was recognized for what it was, inherently unequal. With the Supreme Court's decision, the nation took a first step toward greater equality and opportunity for all people. Unfortunately, a first step does not equate to overnight change. We know from history that even after Brown v. Board, the majority of segregated schools did not integrate until many years later. Even with the legal barriers to equal education broken, achieving true equality for all students has followed a steep and arduous path. My Democrat colleagues have largely been critical of the Department of Education's enforcement of civil rights law, but the reality is Secretary DeVos is following the letter and spirit of the law and regulations. The secretary is thoroughly investigating discrimination claims and acting swiftly when these claims are found to be true. Not only is discrimination and state-sanctioned segregation repugnant and illegal, it also prevents growth and success for all children. Studies have shown that integrated schools promote greater understanding and tolerance and result in improved educational outcomes, particularly for students of color. As a former educator and lifelong learner, I believe with my whole heart that an excellent education is the key to lifelong success. It is the path out of poverty for millions and provides students with the tools and skills they need to build a successful life. All students, regardless of zip code, deserve greater access, deserve access to greater educational opportunities. The legacy of Brown versus Board of Education should be to empower parents with the ability to choose the right school for their child and eliminate the ability of the state to consign children to low-performing schools with no means of escape. School choice gives parents and families the opportunity to break the cycle of poverty and enroll their child in an institution that challenges them, develops their skills and intellect, and encourages them to reach higher. Studies show that when students are given the freedom to attend school in a learning environment best suited to their abilities, they graduate from high school and pursue post-secondary education at higher rates. We'll hear today about the power of choice to transform lives. In the sixty-five years since Brown v. Board, we have not yet achieved true equality. We continue to strive towards a future where all students, regardless of race or color, have the chance to succeed. But while there's more work to be done, we've seen some encouraging trends. Between 2010, 2011, and 2016, 2017, the high school graduation rate for black students increased by eleven percent, more than any other demographic. Additionally, dropout rates for black students declined between 2000 and 2016, while black enrollment and attendance at post-secondary institutions rose over the same period. Change is slow. Change is too slow. The progress we've made should be understood if it's going to continue. I thank the witnesses before the committee today, and I look forward to our discussion about how we can keep working to secure greater equality and even greater opportunity for America's students. I yield back, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Without objection, all other members who wish to insert written statements in the record may do so by submitting them to the committee clerk electronically in Microsoft Word format by five o'clock PM on May fourteenth. I'll now introduce our witnesses. John C. Britton was appointed Acting Dean of the University of the District of Columbia David A. Clark Law School. On July 2018, he joined the UDC faculty in 2009 as a tenured professor. He's previously served as Dean of the Thurgood Marshall School of Law in Texas Southern University in Houston, and as a tenured professor at the University of Connecticut School of Law for twenty-two years, and Chief Counsel, Senior Deputy Director of the Lawyers' Committee for Civil Rights Under the Law in Washington, DC. He writes and litigates on issues in civil and human rights, especially education law. Linda Darling-Hammon is the Charles H. DuCumin Professor of Education Emeritus at Stanford University and founding president of the Learning Policy Institute, created to provide high-quality research for policies that enable equitable and empowering education for each and every child. She's a past president of the American Education Research Association, author of more than thirty books and six hundred other publications on education, quality, and equity, including the award-winning book, "The Flat World and Education: How America's Commitment to Equity Will Determine Our Future." In 2008, she directed the Education Policy Transition Team for President Obama, and she was recently appointed President of the California State Board of Education. Ms. Marissa White has worked at Cornerstone Schools in Washington, DC since 2014 as Business Manager. Before that, she served as a facilitator and office manager for the Community Family Life Services here in DC for four years. Prior to that, she was Field Operations Supervisor with the US Census Bureau, where she managed, recruited, and developed field staff and analyzed special reports. She also worked for Prince George County's Public School System as a program developer and substitute teacher for almost a decade. on. We'll first recognize Dean Britton.
Good morning, Chairman Scott, Ranking Member Dr. Fox, and other members of this committee. My name is John Britton, and I'm a professor at the David A. Clark School of Law, University of the District of Columbia. I appear today as an expert on educational equity with 50 years of experience in theory and in practice in the pursuit of educational equity. In preparation for this testimony and report, I sought the collaboration with the National Conference of School Diversity and the Poverty Race Action Council and more. The social science research clearly demonstrates the benefits of school diversity and integration. Students attending socially, economically, and racially diverse schools have better test scores and higher college attendance rates than peers in more economically and racially segregated schools. Racial diversity in schools also carries long-term benefits. These include subsequent reduced segregation in neighborhoods, colleges, and workplaces, higher levels of social cohesion, and reduced likelihood of racial prejudice. Despite these benefits, 25 percent of public school students attend schools in which there are more than 75 percent of the students eligible for free and reduced-priced lunch. And in urban areas, nearly half of all students attend high-poverty schools. These trends have been getting worse over the past decade. The Government Accounting Office recently found that the percentage of K-12 public schools with high poverty and African-American, Hispanic students increased by 9 percent in 2000 to 2001 and 16 percent in 2013 to 2014. The Stronger Together School Diversity Act of 2016 would empower communities to counter the encroaching desegregation we are facing. As a result of these research findings, the National Coalition for School Diversity supported Stronger Together Diversity Act of 2016. Our policies in pursuit of racial and ethnic equality in education are completely voluntary today. The fact is, school assignment plans designed to promote diversity and integration in education are double voluntary. School authorities voluntarily create plans, and parents, with mutual acquiescence by their children, voluntarily participate in these diversity plans. We must confront, in this 21st century, the twin social policy issues of poverty and inequality, especially in education. Segregation in education is harming our future. Thus, I applaud the committee for remembering the history of Brown in this hearing. Since President Donald Trump's inauguration in 2017, his administration has suspended vital gains in civil rights and education and housing, to name a few. In the field of education, as you mentioned, the Secretary of Education, Betsy DeVos, withdrew the policy on school diversity and integration developed by the Obama administration through the combined efforts of the Justice Department and the U.S. Department of Education Office for Civil Rights. The preceding administration of President George W. Bush had erroneously interpreted a Supreme Court case in 2007 named "Parents Involved in Community Schools versus Seattle School District Number One." While the Trump administration's termination of the school diversity guidance policy may create a chilling effect on school districts that want to voluntarily diversify and pursue integration, the policy established by the Supreme Court in 2007 remains good law. As this nation currently enters the last six years to the first quarter of the 21st century, with hyper-racial segregation in many sectors of society and a reduction in school enforcement and educational policies by the federal government, the courts, and the executive branch, the question asked is, is the nation approaching the end of the Second Reconstruction? In closing, a majority of the Supreme Court, in a 1996 landmark case called Schiff versus O'Neill, a majority of the justices said this: "Although the constitutional basis for the plaintiff's claims to the deprivation that they themselves are suffering, that deprivation potentially has impact on the entire state and its economy, not only its social and cultural fabric, but on the material well-being, on its jobs, industry, and business." Economic and business leaders say that our state's economic well-being is dependent on more skilled workers, technically proficient workers, literate and well-educated citizens. So it is not just that their future depends on the state, the state's future depends on them. Finding a way to cross the racial and ethnic divide has never been more important than it is today.
Thank you. Dr. Hammond.
Chairman Scott, Ranking Member Fox, members of the committee, thank you for your invitation to participate in this hearing. I'm honored to be here today to discuss the federal role in fulfilling the promise of Brown v. Board of Education. I'll make three points in my brief comments and offer recommendations about what the federal government can do to fulfill the promise of Brown. First, a large body of research has found that diverse schools make a positive difference in a wide range of student outcomes. I am one of more than 550 scholars who signed on to a social science report filed in the Parents Involved lawsuit that demonstrated the benefits of integrated schools include gains in math, science, and reading achievement and graduation rates. They also include greater cross-cultural understanding, reduced prejudice, improved critical thinking skills, and increased likelihood that students will live and work in integrated settings as adults. In a recent study looking at the effects of court-ordered desegregation, economist R. Johnson found that Black students' graduation rates climbed by two percentage points for every year the student attended an integrated school, and they also experienced an increase in wages and a decrease in poverty as adults. Meanwhile, white students experienced no declines in outcomes. These gains were tied to the fact that integrated schools had higher per pupil spending and smaller student-teacher ratios, among other resources. Second, the federal role in this domain has made a positive difference when it is well-used and a negative difference when it is poorly used. During the 1960s and 70s, federal support for desegregation led to a dramatic decline in segregation. This, combined with federal efforts to equalize educational opportunity, cut the achievement gap between whites and blacks by more than half in reading and a third in math between 1971 and 1988. Had we stayed on course with these initiatives, there would have been no black-white achievement gap by the year 2000. Unfortunately, nearly all of these policies were eliminated during the 1980s and have not been reinstated. The achievement gap today is 30 percent larger in reading and math than it was 30 years ago. In addition, as some administrations sought to get desegregation orders lifted, desegregation occurred, as you can see in the chart that's about to go up. Desegregation orders produced a sharp decline in segregation, but typically an even sharper increase in desegregation when they were lifted. Today, about half as many Black students experience desegregated schools as was true 30 years ago. To address these trends, as well as confusion about appropriate policy strategies for advancing integration, the Obama administration's voluntary guidance for states and districts, consistent with the court's decision, assisted many districts—I described some of them in my written testimony—that have demonstrated how integration can be successfully pursued in ways that honor parent and student choice and expand opportunities. These include choice-based plans in San Antonio, Texas, Hartford, Connecticut—which John Britton had a lot to do with bringing about—and Omaha, Nebraska, among others. The federal government can work to advance these efforts by, first of all, re-establishing federal grant programs that support voluntary efforts to create more diverse schools, expanding innovative programs to attract diverse students, revising boundaries, training diverse educators. Many of these types of policies are described in the Strength and Diversity Act. Second, the federal government can eliminate the legislative prohibition against district use of federal funds for busing that remains in the General Education Provisions Act, so that funds can be used for transportation. Third, we could increase funding under ESSA in support of school diversity, including funding for magnet schools, which has been flat for many years. Those schools have been shown to increase both integration and student achievement, as well as Title I funds for school improvement. Fourth, we can encourage greater diversity in charter schools, which are in general more segregated than other public schools, by setting expectations for fair and open admissions and recruitment like those laid out by the Century Foundation in a recent publication. Fifth, we can ensure that states enforce ESSA's integrative student assignment policies, which require districts to minimize segregation in assigning students to schools and classrooms. Sixth, we can encourage states, districts, and schools to report on opportunity indicators required by ESSA, including the degree of integration, school funding, and teacher qualifications. And finally, we could reestablish the Department of Education's guidance on school diversity to inform state and local efforts to create more diverse schools. Sixty-five years after the highest court declared that separate but equal has no place in our nation's public school system, we still have considerable work to do. Thank you for your focus on this issue. I'm happy to answer any questions the members may have.
Thank you. Ms. White.
It is most fitting that I would be charged with examining the fulfillment of Board versus Board of Education on its 65th anniversary, as this is also the year of my 65th birthday. I was born three months after the Brown v. Board Supreme Court decision, which stated that separate educational facilities are inherently unequal. The decision, however, did not stipulate or suggest how this end to racial segregation would be implemented. States were only ordered to desegregate with all deliberate speed. This is the era in which I was born. Inherent in the court's decision was the intention that all children, through desegregation, would have equal opportunity to quality education. Was the mandate fulfilled, or was this a platitude of well-meaning words? Did desegregation produce the achievements that were inherently promised? Through my own life experience, I would soon find out. I speak to you today, not as a learned scientist regarding the accumulated data on this subject, but instead, I speak to you from the heart and experiences of a parent who has had the opportunity and sometimes distress of finding ways to accomplish the major responsibility of my life, which is to assist my son, Michael, to succeed in the world. I didn't have all the data, nor did I have preconceived ideas about what was best for Michael. I, as a parent, had to be empowered to make the best decision for my son. Although the initial step to desegregate schools may have seemed successful, the desired outcomes were not obtained. Although Black schools achieved some tangible improvements, they were not to the extent of their white counterparts. And with Blacks being marginalized into all-black neighborhoods, Black students didn't have the real educational opportunities that their white counterparts had. Two years after Michael was born, we were in a tragic car accident that left my husband unable to work. With a constrained budget, we had to look for alternatives for schooling for Michael. We recognized that education was one of the ways, if not the only way, to escape the ravages of the inner city. Brown v. Board intended to empower parents to make the best educational choice for their children. This intended parental empowerment was not real if my child had no opportunity to attend the best or better school. For our family, that changed 50 years after the Brown v. Board decision in 2004, when a proactive program, the DC Opportunity Scholarship Program, was implemented. It allowed our family to choose among public charter and private schools for our son to attend. We were open to exploring all options. My research indicated that school choice had led to improving all three types of school through competition that required all three school types to increase innovative programming, increase school accountability, increases in parental engagement, and providing options for low-income students of color. Michael attended public school from head start through first grade. We applied for that DC Opportunity Scholarship and received it. This opened our options, so Michael transferred to NHB, which was a private school for the second grade. Michael was not able to return to NHB for the third grade because the class was full. And although I was sad, we had no problem with Michael returning to public school. Michael was re-enrolled in a public school, but several weeks into the school year, Michael was bullied at school and was in a fight with three other boys, resulting with him having a bloody lip and other lacerations. I was less concerned about Michael's bloody lip than I was concerned about the school's poor handling of the situation. I was never advised about the fight by the school. The school's excuses were not good enough for me. Michael needed to be in a safe place, and this public school was not it. So I vowed that he would never return to an unsafe school. I called DCOSP, and they advised that the scholarship was still available to Michael. After a few days of researching our alternatives, we found Cornerstone Schools of Washington, DC. I walked in, and it was a totally different environment than the public school that he had attended. The class size was half the size of that of the public school, the students appeared eager and ready to learn, the academic training was rigorous, and oh yes, he felt safe, and I felt safe for him. Michael was a student at Cornerstone from third to seventh grade. We continually evaluated our educational choices, and in the eighth grade, Michael transferred to a charter school. He returned to Cornerstone in the ninth grade and graduated as soliditorian in 2016. He received several scholarships and matriculated at the University of Maryland College Park. Our family is able to speak to the effectiveness of school choice because we have been privileged to have experienced public, private, and charter schools. Through our varied educational experiences, we can truly say that education is not a one-size-fits-all experience. We can truly say that our family has and other families have the right to decide throughout their child's education what is best for their child to succeed. But without school choice, many families do not have the option for their child to receive the equal education promise. I shudder to think of where our son, Michael, would be if he did not have school choice available to him. No, indeed, Brown v. Board of Education mandate has not been fulfilled, but school choice is a step in the right direction in reaching the mandated outcome. Today, Michael White is a successful example of how school choice in all three arenas of public, private, and charter school can be utilized for the successful education of low-income statements. To close, middle- and upper-income students have choice already by virtue of their income and social status. School choice allows low-income families to participate in the American dream afforded by equal education. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Loosen.
I would like to thank Chairman Scott and the members of the House Committee on Educational Labor for inviting me to testify on this important topic. I'm Dan Loosen, the Director of the Center for Civil Rights Remedies at UCLA's Civil Rights Project, which is dedicated to highlighting concerns about racial inequity in our public schools and to bringing the best research to bear on remedies. I consider Brown's promise to be the equitable opportunity to learn. The focus of my presentation is how the disparate impact of unjustified school discipline policies contributes to racial differences in the days of lost instruction and thereby to inequities in the opportunity to learn. Stopping the disparate impact from unjustified discipline is critically important, therefore, to fulfilling Brown's promise. The first slide shows data from 2015-16 and the racial gap for secondary students in terms of days of lost instruction per 100 enrolled due to out-of-school suspensions. While the gaps within the districts are disturbing, so too are the differences between the districts. Compare Richmond City, Virginia, where Black students lost nearly 500 days per 100 Black students enrolled. The black-white gap there of 446 days is 12 times larger than the black-white gap in Virginia Beach. Might these districts have different discipline policies? The racial discipline gap is greatest in Grand Rapids, Michigan, but both Blacks and Whites are losing too many days from out-of-school suspensions. If I were elected to the Grand Rapids School Board, I'd call for a review of their discipline policies. And if I found that most of the lost instruction and racial disparities were due to suspensions for dress code violations, or getting tough on tardy students, or truancy, or some no-excuses policy, I would insist on replacing those harsh punitive responses with educationally justified ones. Unfortunately, the Trump administration recently eliminated the federal Title VI Guidance on School Discipline. Its Disparate Impact Section prompted school districts to review justification of discipline policies that produced the kind of impact we see in Grand Rapids, Richmond City, and Anson County, North Carolina, all where Blacks lost over 300 days of instruction, more than whites, due to out-of-school suspensions. This next slide is from our California report, and it's about a particular policy of suspending students for minor behaviors, lumped together under the category of disruption or defiance. It shows how the share of days of lost instruction caused by that one policy went from causing 49 percent of all lost instruction in 2011 and '12 to only 20 percent in 2015-16. In other words, as districts found better ways of responding to minor behaviors than simply kicking kids out of school, not only was there a decline in the total days lost, there was no major uptick in suspensions for more serious misbehaviors. The next slide shows what happened to the days of instruction per 100 for each racial group due to suspensions for all reasons during the same period. Many districts, like Los Angeles, banned suspensions for disruption, defiance, for K-12, and there was a statewide ban for grades K-3. Black students experienced the largest drop in days of lost instruction due to discipline from 64 days from 64 days to 39 days, and the black-white gap narrowed from a difference of 47 to a difference of 29. The evidence suggests that the policy of suspension for minor offenses contributed to the large racial gap in California, and eliminating that policy has helped reduce the disparity. This final slide, I will conclude by summarizing, is from the research of Dr. Russell Rumberger, one of the nation’s leading experts on why students drop out of school. After controlling for the main reasons that students drop out, his analysis determined that getting suspended predicted a decrease in the graduation rate by as much as 15 percentage points. He then estimated the economic cost from the lowering of the graduation rate that was due to suspension and found that suspensions cost our nation $35 billion just from one year’s cohort. These economic losses hurt all members of our society, but undoubtedly harmed communities of color more than others. I argue that it makes good economic sense to invest in alternatives designed to reduce suspensions and keep more kids in school. Keeping kids safe is, of course, of paramount importance, but safety includes protecting our children from injustice. Unfortunately, the Trump administration has signaled that it will no longer protect children of color from the disparate harm that is caused by unjustified policies. Therefore, I encourage Congress to act by passing Chairman Scott’s Equity and Inclusion Enforcement Act, which would restore a private right of action so parents and civil rights advocates could bring disparate impact claims to court. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pierre.
I grew up in New York City, where I attended public schools between 2000 and 2012, interrupted by brief periods in other cities as my parents moved around. The brief sojourns in schools outside New York City opened my eyes. Schools in America are by no means equal, but the sources of inequality differ from what most people think. I learned from schools in Biggerton, New York, and Winston-Salem, North Carolina, that parents and teachers can work together to help students behave properly and succeed academically. Most of the time, however, I attended schools beset by disciplinary problems. When I acted out in schools in Biggerton and Winston-Salem, the teachers called my parents, and I settled down. Nothing like that happened in the other schools. But by grade nine, I had my own ideas about what school was good for. I wanted to learn, and learning was always more difficult when disruption ruled. In September 2008, I arrived with my stepfather at John Adams High School in South Ozone Park, Queens, to complete my registration for fall classes. Several hours later, I watched from a table at the perimeter of the cafeteria as members of the Crip gang pounced a young man sporting the colors of the rival blood gang. I had just received my lunch. Incidents like these were common at John Adams, where, according to the New York State Education Department, only 64% of students graduate in four years; just 2% more graduate in six years. Violence, gang activity, and classroom disruptions were the John Adams experience. The high school was something like a poorly-run prison, where the inmates intimidate the guards. Every morning, we walked through metal detectors, at the end of which stood a New York City Public Safety Officer, wand in hand, waiting to scan us again. It was annoying but plainly necessary. Classes could be disrupted at any moment by late-arriving students who paid no price for tardiness. Students dipped into classes into which they weren’t registered to escape our vice-principal’s infamous hall sweeps. Hall sweeps collected late students, quarantining them in a lecture room on the third floor to avoid more classroom disruptions. Class clowns heckled instructors incessantly, and others laced their jeering with threats of physical harm and racial epithets. When the situation got seriously out of control, the teachers called public safety officers and school administrators, but their arrival escalated the situation, usually by giving the student occasion to put on a show for his friends. By the time the student was hauled off and the flip desks set right, the bell signaling the end of class rang. So much for instruction. I recall these anecdotes every time I hear people decry Black and Latino students alarmingly high suspension and expulsion rates. In 2015, New York City Mayor Bill de Blasio issued rules requiring school officials to receive permission from the New York City Education Department to suspend students. Recently, the California Senate passed a measure forbidding public schools from suspending students in grades 4 through 8 who willfully defy school staff. The bill was supported by legislators alarmed that although Black students account for 5.5% of California students, they receive 20% of all suspensions in the state. Similar measures trailed the Obama administration’s 2014 guidelines seeking to curb racial disparities in school disciplinary proceedings. Proponents of these measures argued that because Black students are disparately impacted by school suspension, our nation’s school systems are hotbeds of racial discrimination. But this disparate impact theory is a fantasy. Violence and lack of order in underserved schools deprives all students of their rightful educational opportunities. Catering to the disruptors by keeping them in classrooms or halls, cafeterias, or wherever they choose to hang out is a terrible idea. The Obama-era guidelines aren’t social justice. It is state-mandated foolishness. Keeping teen predators in schools so that they can continue preying on vulnerable students doesn’t bring educational opportunity to anyone, but that’s what the campaign to undermine school discipline in minority communities has come to. Why do urban schools tend to have more disciplinary problems than other schools? I don’t have all the answers, but I know that the problem feeds on itself. In many cases, students are influenced by mainstream culture, which often encourages minority youth towards transgressive behavior, lets students feel they can get away with anything, and some will try to find out just how far they can go. And when nothing happens to them, other students will misbehave as well. These problems are aggravated, of course, in communities with high rates of family dysfunction and other social problems. The root problem here is not racism, but even in the most afflicted communities, schools can still be beacons of hope, the fertile fields of potential from which the leaders of tomorrow will sprout and grow into the next generation of great Americans. Turning them into sanctuaries for bullies, early-career criminals, and gangs is unwise public policy and will stymie progress.
Thank you. Mr. Carranza.
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Chairman Scott, Ranking Member Dr. Fox, and all the members of the committee here today. On behalf of Mayor de Blasio and the New York City Department of Education, I am honored to be here today. Thank you for the opportunity to testify at this important hearing, and thank you for your support for our 1.1 million New York City public school students. Now, I know, just as the mayor knows, just as everyone in this chamber knows, that public education is an investment in the future. From my own experience as a student, a teacher, a principal, and now chancellor of the largest school system in the nation, I can tell you that a public school education can change lives. Unfortunately, the scourge of school segregation robs many students of color and those living in poverty of the high-quality education they deserve. Sixty-five years after the decision, I humbly say to you, school systems nationwide have not fulfilled the mandate of the United States Supreme Court in Brown versus Board of Education. Decades of history have taught us that segregation is inherently unequal. For too long, we’ve been afraid to confront this reality, but we can no longer allow such a system to persist, just because the problem is hard to fix. As chancellor, it is my overarching goal to advance equity, not yesterday, not maybe in the future, but advance equity now. So we are confronting this problem head-on by increasing diversity in some of our most segregated school districts. After a community-driven process, we have approved diversity plans put forward in three school districts in New York: Districts 1 and 3 in Manhattan, and District 15 in Brooklyn. In District 15, due in part to longstanding academic screens for admissions, many middle schools have long-served very low numbers of low-income Black and Latino students. Others basically served only low-income Black and Latino students. District 15’s diversity planning process brought everyone to the table: community members, parents, and students, advocates, and school staff from across the district, and they had tough but necessary conversations, conversations grounded in data and occurring in different languages. The result was a grassroots-driven, comprehensive plan that eliminated all academic screens in favor of a lottery. District 15 middle schools will now prioritize approximately half of their seats for students from low-income families, English-language learners, and students in temporary housing. These efforts to increase diversity in District 15 inspired our $2 million grant program to support school districts to develop locally-driven diversity plans in communities across New York City. This program is supported by federal Title IV funding. I want to turn to the well-known issue of our eight of our most selective schools in the city, the specialized high schools. New York state law mandates that admission be based solely on results from a single test. No other institution in the country uses such a process with one single test. What outcomes has this led to? This year, Black and Latino students received only 10% of admission offers in a school system that is nearly 70% Black and Latino students. This is unfair; it is unacceptable; unfortunately, it is a status quo. As the mayor has put forward a proposal to change New York state law to eliminate the single test and expand admissions criteria to include a proven combination of grades and state test scores, if we are to advance equity now, we must eliminate the single test for specialized high schools now. However, integration is not just about giving Black and Latino students access to predominantly white schools; it is much more complicated than that. It is also about priming our school communities for this change by creating classroom cultures that respect and celebrate diversity. It’s about implementing our sweeping equity and excellence for all agenda based upon the premise that whether students attend a school with mostly white peers or mostly Black and Brown peers, they all deserve an excellent education, the opportunity to develop invaluable life skills, and the social capital that helps to open doors. And meaningful integration is about ensuring that all 125,000 people who work with our students in the New York City system address their implicit biases that may create different expectations for different students. We are delivering important anti-bias training to each and every one as a central part of our advancing equity now. Now briefly, I’d like to turn to some ways in which the federal government can support the work that is elaborated on further in my written testimony. Number one, reinstate federal guidance to support diversity in schools. The prior guidance on racial diversity in K-12 schools provided that support by explaining how school systems can voluntarily consider race to achieve diversity and avoid social racial isolation in schools. The current administration has rescinded that guidance and has failed to issue any alternative policies. Number two, reinstate federal guidance to support equity and discipline. Prior school discipline guidance supported school systems by describing how those systems can administer student discipline without discriminating against students on the basis of race, color, or national origin. Number three, increase and protect Title IV resources. The administration’s proposed budget includes elimination of Title IV, an important resource that, as I noted, we are currently using to fund our $2 million diversity grant program. And number four, pass Strength in Diversity Act. This act authorizes $120 million to provide planning implementation grants to support voluntary local efforts to increase socioeconomic diversity in our schools. The goal of New York City’s diversity agenda is to build a future that is not bound by history, by demographics, or by income. We believe we can create a system that reflects the best of our diverse, inspiring, and innovative city. We must continue to engage in the additional hard work necessary to disrupt the status quo, to desegregate our schools, and advance equity now. We are grateful to this committee’s focus on integration and the advancement of equity, and I thank you for your time, and would be happy to answer questions from the committee.
Thank you. We begin with member questions. Our first call on the gentlelady from California, Ms. Davis.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to all of you for being here and for being really helpful to us today. I want to turn first to Dr. Darling-Hammon, and thank you for your in-depth work and focus over the years. Why don’t you just answer for us? So what is the importance of resource equity in combating segregation?
Well, the original theory of action in Brown v. Board of Education in the cases that were consolidated into it was both one about resources and one about desegregation, because there’s been historically very disparate resources allocated to schools that were experiencing de jure segregation. And even today, there are disparities in funding that are associated with segregation. Segregation and poverty and inadequate resources typically go hand-in-hand. There was a recent study by the Education Trust, which found that nationally, districts serving the most students of color receive about $1,800 per pupil less than districts that serve the fewest students of color. In many states, there’s a much bigger divide. You’ll see that in, you know, Lower Mary in Pennsylvania will spend twice as much as Philadelphia; New Trier spends twice as much as Chicago; Scarsdale used to spend twice as much as New York City, and it’s probably still close to that. It’s considerable differential. One study from Ed Build found that predominantly non-white districts receive about $23 billion less than predominantly white districts. So these two things go hand-in-hand, and it’s very hard to adjust the resource needs and also meet the resource needs in high-poverty districts without also tackling desegregation.
We see that some school districts, despite their best intentions, really trying to get at some of these issues, it’s not sufficient. So what is it additionally, and I think you’ve all talked about some of the harmful policies as well as beneficial policies at the federal level? How do we help the school districts who are trying to do this, good intentions but not sufficient? And if I might, I’ll turn to the chancellor in a minute to ask about San Francisco, because that is one example where, I think, again, good intentions but not sufficient. How would you respond?
Well, in my written testimony, I talk about several districts that have inter-district desegregation plans and intra-district desegregation plans that require investing in schools so that you have equitable funding, so you can build high-quality choices in every community. I was very sympathetic to Ms. White’s testimony about the lack of such schools in some communities, but it takes an investment. You need transportation funds to allow kids to get to the schools that will meet their needs and choices, as is going on in Hartford and San Antonio. You need fair and open admissions policies. So there are a number of things that the guidance on diversity in the Obama administration offered as strategies that actually have worked in a number of districts, but they do require, you know, investment, and they require opportunity to leverage the choice for equity, because without that set of bumper guards, it will sometimes produce inequity and more segregation.
Thank you. And turning to the chancellor, if you could, obviously, as one of the recent articles in the New York Times stated, the program in San Francisco did not live up to the expectations. Some would call it a failure, perhaps. You might make folk feel differently, that there were some strengths, but... So what is it with best intentions, not sufficient? What happened?
Well, as Professor Darling-Hammon has stated, you can’t have choice if you don’t really fund the choice. So if you don’t have transportation, if you’re not creating programs that are geographically distributed in the city, and this is a phenomenon that I saw not only as superintendent in San Francisco, but as superintendent in Houston, same thing. If you have choice without the appropriate undergirding of programmatic opportunities, of distributed opportunities across the city, and a mechanism for informing parents and students of what those choices are, you really don’t have choice. And I think that was one of the issues that plagued us in San Francisco, was how do you create those kinds of programs with the appropriate funding streams in geographically distributed areas across the city?
Thank you very much, and my time is up. I return my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Fox.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Pierre, you reached out to us, asking to testify today. Is that correct?
Yes, ma’am.
Okay. Why was it so important for you to have the chance to share your perspective?
I think it’s important to talk about these issues honestly and in a way that actually takes minority communities seriously. I think the Obama-era guidelines are an abdication rather than an assertive effort to cure the ills in minority communities.
Thank you. Ms. White, what does the promise of Brown v. Board of Education mean to you, and how do you think that decision helped your son reach his potential?
That decision helped my son reach his potential in that he now had choices. He had a choice to either go to the local school, local neighborhood school, and he had the option then to attend either a private school or charter. So he had the ability to choose among three different types of learning environments.
Thank you. Ms. White, you talked about this in your testimony, but I want to follow up on it. Your son attended a traditional public school, a public charter school, and a private school throughout his education. Why did you change schools, and was it easy to do so?
I changed schools initially because of, I explained earlier, that there was an altercation at the school, and the school did not utilize the... In the inner city, we know that some schools have issues with behavior, and so this was an obvious behavior problem that was not addressed, and so I felt that it was necessary then to move him. And I can... And I, we continually looked at the options and decided that that was, that we needed to move further. And we continued to evaluate it. It was not a one-time, you know, he attends one school. We evaluated it continually. And no, the transition was not easy, but I, as a parent, made it easier for my son, explaining the transition and giving him any additional support he needed to do that.
Thank you very much. Mr. Pierre, did you see other students at your high school become discouraged in the way that you did? What was the impact on those students?
Oh, absolutely. At John Adams High School, if you cooperated with teachers and did your lessons, the students would make fun of you. They'd say that you're acting white. And that, of course, puts tons of pressure on minority students who are just trying to get by. The idea that disruptive behavior and failing is somehow tied to black identity is one of the most destructive ideas in our country today. President Obama probably never had any experience with that because he went to high school in Hawaii. I went to high school in New York City.
Mr. Pierre, do you think having greater freedom to choose the right educational option would have benefited you or changed the dynamics you observed?
Hmm. Well, I guess I ended up here, so I think that I had a family that was able to instill good values and work ethic in me, and I survived. But for other students, for whom languishing in a New York City public school was detrimental, I'd absolutely support their right to seek out school districts where they'll have a better education and a better learning environment. It's just cruel to keep well-performing minority students in classes with disruptive students.
Mr. Pierre, when you visited your old school in 2016, did you have the chance to talk to any teachers or other staff?
Yeah, absolutely. And they were demoralized. They can't do anything. When I was in high school, we weren't allowed to have cell phones in class. Students were bringing their cell phones to staircases reeked of marijuana, which would have never happened with the vice principal that was there when I was there. And I said, "Well, what happened?" And they said, "Well, we can't suspend anyone." Shortly after that visit, I read a New York Post article about the John Adams High School principal refusing to suspend a student who, a senior student who made a sex tape with a freshman. And the word around school was that he wanted to keep the numbers down.
Thank you very much. I want to thank our witnesses again for being here today, and I yield back, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. A gentleman from Connecticut, Mr. Courtney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for taking the time to focus on Brown v. Board of Education in terms of, again, the period that we've experienced in terms of ups and downs. One place where there, I would argue there was some progress was referred to by Professor Britton in his remarks when he read from the holding of Chef versus O'Neill, a case that those of us from Connecticut are very familiar with. He was the lead counsel for the plaintiff in that case. Took almost eight years to get from filing the lawsuit to the final judgment in 1996, which ruled, again, that segregation under the state constitution, in fact, was a violation of state law. And that triggered a whole nother process in terms of trying to find the resources to implement a system of breaking down those barriers. Again, I just think that Professor Britton's leadership and advocacy, again, persisting to go back to the courts to force the state legislature to come up with the resources for a segregation plan, has resulted in some positive outcomes. Mr. Chairman, I have an article from the American Prospect, "Desegregated Differently", which describes, again, the Chef versus O'Neill case, which I'd like to ask to be admitted to the record.
Without objection.
And it states very clearly in the first paragraph that nearly half of the public school students in the city of Hartford now attend desegregated schools. Included in that sort of plan is a chef school, as it's called in East Hartford, Connecticut, the IB Academy, which my daughter Elizabeth attended and graduated in 2013. Again, it was rated by the U.S. News and World Report as the fifth-best high school in the state of Connecticut. Again, totally diverse student body, where students from Hartford, Connecticut are transported every day along with kids from other suburban areas. And again, it's shown that, in fact, diversity and quality are not, are just not incompatible, but in fact, work together to produce great outcomes for students. So again, Professor Britton, based on your experience, and, you know, dealing with, again, the resource issue after the, in the wake of the court's decision, I mean, to some degree, that's really the mission that we should really be focused on in terms of trying to get the benefits that you described in your testimony. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And the Strength in Diversity Act, which my friend, Congresswoman Fudge, would open the door to expanding those resources, as well as the magnet school grants, which the chancellor referred to, which have really kind of not been out there for communities. That would help, don't you think, based on your experience in terms of breaking down resistance to really enhancing these types of programs?
Absolutely. I agree with both chancellor and my colleague, Dr. Linda Darling-Hammon.
Because, you know, what we're seeing is that, again, you hit that about 50% mark in terms of kids attending desegregated schools, but it has somewhat stalled because of budget issues in Connecticut and also some resistance in terms of local communities funding issues like transportation. If the federal government were to step in and really provide a new infusion of resources, I mean, that would really turbocharge and jumpstart, you know, these models that we know are actually working. Isn't that correct?
That is correct.
And chancellor, I don't know if you want to just sort of chime in, but, you know, that would get to the heart of some of the other criticisms that we've heard here. I mean, I don't want to speak ill of the New York City school system, but frankly, it is highly segregated. And if we had programs which, again, were able to diversify student bodies, I think, frankly, you would see improvement in all across the board. And I was wondering if you could comment on that.
Yes, sir. So it would be a game changer. And again, resources, as public school systems, we don't have the ability to charge more for our product. We don't sell products. We educate souls. So we are dependent upon the funding that we get to be good public stewards of that funding. So additional resources gives us the opportunity to create programs, to distribute those programs through an equity lens in communities that have historically been underfunded. It also allows us to provide mechanisms for parents in the traditional public schools to access those programs and students to access those programs. As you mentioned, the culinary arts program. We know that students have lots of varying interests. So as we work to modernize what that curriculum looks like and give students a portfolio of options, the funding becomes central to that.
Well, thank you. And again, that really should be our focus in terms of next steps. Again, I just want to publicly thank Professor Britton for his amazing work in the state of Connecticut. My family got a firsthand view of the benefits, and it was just, you're a giant in the history of our state.
Thank you, sir. You're much too kind.
Gentleman yields back, Dr. Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank all of the panel for being here. It's an extremely important topic, and I may be the only person sitting up here that graduated from high school in a segregated school system in the rural South. And the first African-American student I went to school with was college, and then medical school, and then on. And I certainly know that that was wrong and certainly had a very detrimental effect. I want a couple of questions, I'd like a couple of questions. And Ms. White, I live a block from a charter school here in DC. I go by it every single day. We just had a huge debate in Tennessee on charter schools. Should tuitions be used? And you made a very eloquent case for that. And I don't see how you can ask a parent at a failing school to keep their, that's the only chance that child has. And we know if you go through one or two grades in a failing school, your child gets way behind. And so I would like you to answer a couple of questions. One, what would you say to someone who suggests that you should only have a public school choice, that the charter schools or private schools reduce resources to public ones? That's a common denominator that we hear.
What I've found was that that's contrary to the truth in that competition allows schools to, to work better together, not just to work better together, but competition allows them to work, to do the best work possible that they can. When you're in any competitive arena, you do better when you have competition. And so we found that instead of it taking resources away from the public school, it increases the public school's ability to do better work as they're competing with the charter and then private schools.
Well, one of the things I want to, thank you, and one of the things I want to do is the, is the basically discipline part. Discipline was not a problem in my public high school because my principal was a Marine, World War II Marine, so it was not a problem obeying him, let me tell you, Mr. Thompson. I'll never forget him as long as I live. And to Mr. Pierre, I want you to talk, and I want Mr. Lucin or the chancellor to, and chancellor, you have a huge chore in front of you with over a million students. But how do you answer what he said? I know in my community at home, we have an alternative school. You don't get lucky and get kicked out and don't go to school. You then go to alternative school where you can continue your education. You don't get to stop, but you get the disruptive student out of the class. What do you say this good student sitting here, when his education is disrupted by disruptive students, either one of you?
So it is the job of every teacher, every principal, every chancellor, to ensure that there are environments in schools that are supportive, that are academically rigorous. That should be happening in every school. What has been described here is not what anybody wants. However, it has been my experience, almost 30 years as an educator, that when you build capacity for teachers, for administrators, to be able to work with students in a different way, to be able to apply different strategies to work with students, you get better results. And, you know, a surgeon doesn't just go for the scalpel. There are different things that you diagnose and different treatments that you apply based on what the circumstances are. The end result is you want the patient to be well. So what we're doing in New York City is building capacity for teachers and principals to use different types of strategies to meet the needs of students. In some cases, we have to connect students with resources and services that have to do with some of the personal challenges that they're facing. That makes a big difference.
Let me interrupt you. I don't want, because my time is going to expire. Will Mr. Pierre respond to that?
I mean, we would hear this kind of stuff from the many chancellors I had when I was in high school. There was a brief period of lots of overturn. You know, a lot of it just sounds academic and, you know, tons of abstract nouns thrown together, equity, strategies. We never saw any strategies. We saw disruptive students. We saw teachers encouraging us to lie on surveys when state or city inspectors came. It's, it was just a disaster. The idea that the, any chancellor in New York City has made things better in minority-serving schools the past five years, 10 years, 20 years, is just not speaking to the reality that's on the ground.
Would you recommend that the, and he has a tough job, but if you recommend that, maybe he do the, sort of the boss that's hiding out that day, and they don't know who he is, and he goes and talks to the students there?
Absolutely. If the administrators don't know the state's coming, the students will be really honest, I think. We were told to lie.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, sir. I'll yield back.
Yes, if I could also respond, I think it's important, on page 12 of our written testimony, to note that in Los Angeles, where they eliminated the policy of suspending kids for this catch-all category of disruption or willful defiance, there was a dramatic, dramatic decrease in the loss of instruction. And during that same period, Los Angeles had the largest increase in the improvement in graduation rates that it has ever experienced. And at the same time, in a two-year period where they're tracking test scores, the achievement went up, not down. And other studies have found the same thing, but it makes sense. If you reduce the amount of lost instruction for these kind of minor offenses, I'm not talking about kids committing serious crimes or anything like that. There was just massive amounts of, massive numbers of kids losing instructional time because of these minor offenses due to these sort of, these policies that kick kids out right and left. So I think it's really important to keep that in perspective. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentlelady from Ohio, Ms. Fudge.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you all so much for being here. Just for somebody watching from not in this room, so we won't be confused, we are not talking about a choice bill here today. Brown v. Board is a civil rights bill that speaks to equity, equality, and desegregation. It has absolutely nothing to do with choice. Just want to make that clear upfront. But I do believe that 65 years after Brown, that a quality education, one that is equitable, is still the civil rights issue of our time, as only those who are wealthy are guaranteed to have a good education. And we also know that it is obvious that racism is just not going to die here. So we have to continue to be sure that we enforce things like Brown v. Board. And I'm really impressed that a ranking member talks about the secretary, who she believes believes in the letter and the spirit of the law. But I promise you, it was not the law that had her dismiss 1,200 civil rights actions that she didn't even read. And it really wasn't the law that instructed her to start to dismantle the division of civil rights within her department. So I don't know what law she is following. And it doesn't sound like she cares very much either. Let me just ask a question of Mr. Carranza, Mr. Superintendent. Tell me how funneling of public dollars to private and religious schools impacts your ability to serve your students?
It siphons the lifeblood of programming. It siphons the opportunities. We know that students that have opportunities for enrichment, for example, one of many examples, students that get to go to the opera, they get to go to a museum, they get to go on a trip and experience new things. We know that students in economically depressed communities don't have those kinds of opportunities. We use every penny of our funding to keep the lights on and to keep the water running. So additional resources that we could have that then get siphoned elsewhere detract from the ability to provide those kinds of opportunities, which many people would say is the definition of a well-rounded education. So it's critically important to us.
Thank you. Dr. Darling-Hammon, you participated in a funding formula in your state, am I right? Could you just tell me how that formula really counters the disparate impact of desegregation in our schools today?
Well, we've just redesigned the funding formula in California so that it actually is associated with attending to pupil needs. So districts get an equal amount of money to start, and then they get more money for each child in poverty who is an English learner or who is in foster care or homeless. And those concentrations of funding are giving the districts that serve students with the greatest needs the opportunity to provide the stronger programming, which ultimately will also support desegregation and integration in some of the cities where you've got a population that will stay in the schools when they improve. And so that's already beginning to happen.
So it has nothing to do with property taxes?
Well, the money now goes to the, there is property tax money, there's other money, it all goes to.
But there's money on top of that, right?
Yeah.
So that people who live in poor communities won't always be poor in their educational system.
Exactly. So now, now we're redistributing that money in a way that is attendant to people needs, and that's a critical part of the process. We've had a lot of conversation here about what kinds of investments are needed. One is to get states to be equitable in their funding. And there have been efforts to encourage states in that regard in past administrations. Another is to then make those investments in things like magnet schools. Right now, we're spending $107 million and $440 million on charters. We should try to spend as much on schools that are high-quality magnets as we do on schools that are.
Thank you. And we all know that charters are not, have yet to be proven better than any other school. Professor Britton, if you'd like to make some comment, I know you were trying to get in before, and since you're a law professor and I'm a lawyer, I yield the balance of my time to you, sir.
Thank you very much, Congresswoman Fudge. I just wanted to say that the question we face is where will we be 50 years from now in terms of looking at Brown? We've come 65 years so far, ups and downs, peaks and valleys, and we have about 35 more years to go for the 100th anniversary of Brown. Unless we come together to look at the question of race, particularly in education, but in housing, in criminal justice, in all fields, we will never reach the equality that was set forth in Brown.
Thank you so much. I yield back, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. A gentleman from Michigan, Mr. Wahlberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thanks to the panel for being here. Ms. White, thank you for being part of the panel, too. It's great to have one who's identified, I know others are, but identified specifically as a white student. as a parent. I think in Brown versus Board of Education, in seeing that worked out to the best of its capabilities, I think it mandates that parents are returned to their proper responsibility with their children, their children, their children. And parents who understand that and truly care, which I think are the majority of parents, not all, but the majority, are integral and most important in making sure that Brown v. and other attempts at making sure that we have quality education for all is there. So thank you. Ms. White, I imagine you and your family have become resources for other families facing similar challenges for educating their own kids. What advice do you give to other families looking for educational options for their children?
I always share with parents that if this is a — life is a situation where you're going to either pay now or pay later. And so it's a lot less, it's a lot easier when we pay now and taking the time out to be very intentional about checking into what the options are for our children's education. And so I ask them to invest as much time, and I help them invest, as much time as possible to check into all of the possibilities available to them.
And you checked into, for your children, as I understand it, traditional public schools, public charter schools, as well as private schools?
Correct.
Did you find common traits in the schools that you felt were effective in educating your children? And second, were those traits exclusive to any single type of school?
One of the major traits that I saw was in the area of parental engagement. So where there was parental engagement in the school, the students seemed to, the students performed better. And so, and that was across the line, whether they were in a public school, private school, or a charter school. And the amount of dollars, I don't know all of the data in that regard, but I know that if you give parents enough information and you get them engaged and understanding what their responsibility is, the students will do better.
Was this engagement by parents at a specific economic strata?
No.
Specific communities?
There had to be intentional parental engagement. So where the parental engagement was found, whether it was a higher socioeconomic group or lower, the students performed better.
Were the schools helpful in bringing about that engagement?
I've worked with a public school in the district, and one in five in Prince George's County, public schools where there was substantial parental engagement, and they did excellently.
You talked in your testimony about needing to be empowered as a parent. What's the effect on families when parents feel disempowered with respect to their children's education?
The effect on the families?
The effect on, specifically on families when parents feel disempowered?
When parents feel disempowered, they're just not motivated to make the changes that need to be made. So we have to empower them and make them understand that they have a right and a responsibility to make decisions for their children.
Mr. Pierre, could you comment on that as well in your studies and involvement about parents being empowered or disempowered, what the impact is?
I agree, but I caution against putting so much emphasis on, you know, which programs are available for parents. Much of this starts when people have children for the first time. At my high school, most students who were South Asian or Latino had two-parent households, married, sort of decided to have kids, were invested in them. This is often not the case in Black American communities, and it creates an environment where a lot of children don't have responsible parents around them. And if, I'm sure a lot of people, if they knew that school choice was available, would jump on it, but many people don't, because they have kids too young, when they're seventeen or eighteen, and they aren't aware of these things, and life just goes on.
Thank you. I yield back.
Thank you. A gentleman from Northern Mariana Islands, Mr. Sablon.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, for holding today's hearing, and I welcome to all the panelists. Thank you for joining us. Let me start, Mr. Lawson, with you, Mr. Lawson? I got that right? Thank you. So on December twenty-first, two thousand and eighteen, Secretary DeVos rescinded the school discipline guidance created by the Obama administration to ensure that students of color are in discipline more harshly than their peers. Now, according to the Data Quality Campaign, only twenty-six states are collecting data on school discipline in their state plans. Can you explain the effects of rescinding the guidance and the importance of school districts having support from the federal government to reform discipline policies to reduce disparities while keeping schools safe? Something that Mr. Pierre would understand.
Yes. I think there are a number of, first of all, when Secretary DeVos and the Trump administration withdrew the guidance, it sent a signal to all the districts across the nation that they no longer had to concern themselves when they were suspending kids right and left, and even if it had a profound disparate impact on one group or another. And I've pointed out that this is good, common-sense policy because of the impact on graduation rates, because of the impact on lost instruction in general. Moreover, her justification, I want to point out, cited a study that has been discredited and was discredited at the time. So there was a study that claimed that Black students were not discriminated against when you compared Black and white students who were similarly situated. In fact, another very conservative researcher with the same dataset totally debunked that study and found that, in fact, Black students compared to similarly situated white students were sixty percent more likely to be suspended. So it just boggles the mind that they would rely on such discredited research when there's study after study after study that shows that Black students are treated differently, so they're punished more harshly.
Okay. Thank you. And on two occasions that we had the secretary here, it was just impossible, worse than pulling Molartis than getting an answer from her. Chancellor Carranza, the student population of New York City public schools is majority, minority, like my district and the Northern Marianas. So could you speak to why diversifying the teaching profession is critical to the success of students of color? And what more should we at the federal level do to better recruit and retain highly qualified minority teachers?
So it's important that students see their education and their educational environment reflect who they are, not only in the curriculum and what they study and how they study and what they celebrate, but also in the people that are in front of them. And for many students, particularly students of color, and I am a student of color myself, I'm an English language learner, it was important for me to see role models that were my teachers, that were my principals, that were superintendent. So that becomes very, very important on that perspective. But it's also important in that students that have teachers of color, especially teachers that come from their background, there's a cultural competence that comes with that. When you walk into a classroom and you're an English language learner, a Latino student, and the teacher says, "Bienvenido," hey, have a seat, or I'm going to call your grandma, or tu nana, le voy a hablar a tu nana, there's a certain cultural competence that connects that student with their culture.
I got a lot of that in school. Thank you. And Dr. Linda Darling Hammond, I know you were pointing at the chairman, probably trying to add on to Mr. Lawson's, but in your testimony and report, the federal role in school integration, Brown's promise and present challenges, you discuss the importance of the federal role in promoting school diversity and access to opportunity. Again, in July twenty-eighteen, Secretary DeVos rescinded the voluntary diversity guidance to help school districts improve diversity in K-12. What effect has the recession had on school districts seeking to improve diversity? And what message does this send from the federal government? You have twenty-four five seconds.
Well, it sends the message that the federal government is not forward-looking about helping districts, you know, create more diversity. And it also raises confusion in the wake of the Parents Involved case about what are the legitimate ways to support diversity in the ways that Chancellor Carranza is doing in New York City. There are guidance about specific strategies that districts have taken up that have been successful that is now not easily accessible to districts across the country.
Yeah, I see my time is up. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I yield back.
Thank you. A gentleman from Georgia, Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I think the panel, for your input today on this critical subject in our country, as the professor said, we've been at this a long time. And we need to, we need to figure this out, because just a couple of things that I would remind my colleagues and the panel is that the U.S. currently spends the most on education of any country in the world. It's about a hundred and sixty thousand to educate students publicly, and one in five by graduates is functionally illiterate. We're also, although we spend the most on education, we're currently ranked thirty-fourth in science, and I believe twenty, no, thirty-fourth in math and twenty-fourth in science out of seventy-two developed nations. So obviously, the, whatever model we're using is not working. Our students are challenged. I know that to get in college today is very, very difficult, certain colleges in my district. But at the same time, we have some examples of some schools in my district that are making tremendous progress. We have a school system, intercity school system, in the largest city in my district that has the number-one high school in the country, Davidson Fine Arts, it's a magnet school. We also have in that county a school that is supported by Presbyterian Church, and this school is for those students who are basically told they're losers in the public education system, and these parents have no other place to turn. And they have to pay a little something, but it's largely supported by the business community and others. It is a faith-based school, and it is amazing the results that they're getting. I mean, these kids are stars. In fact, they're pretty much offered full rise to any private school they want to go to when they get out of that school. And then I have an example of an intercity school in Dublin, Georgia, where they, I mean, they finally just took the three schools and they made them theme schools. One is in arts, one is a STEM, and the other one's a leadership. Parents got up at five o'clock in the morning to start signing up their children at eight o'clock in the morning for which school they were going to go to. We have a ninety-five percent graduation rate in that city school system right now. So I'm saying that we're getting the job done locally, but somehow the federal government is messing all this up. It is really, I mean, this one-size-fits-all, like you said, L.A., there's some good things happening out there, meaning that L.A., New York, obviously very, very different. And so that's where we're missing it, on the federal level. In other words, the federal government says you should, you have to do this, they throw a lot of money at it. It doesn't work for each school district. Ms. Pierre, the thing that occurred to me when you were speaking, and we have it at home, is the gang problem. What, in your mind, is causing these young people to migrate to these gangs and creating, like I said, disruptions in, not only the education system, but in society as a whole?
Well, it's interesting. This is something a lot of rappers talk about as they get older. The absence of fathers in the Black community leads a lot of young men to turn to other male figures in the community who seem to have authority, and gangs can be a source of protection, friendship, fraternity. So that happens a lot.
Well, we know the family has been under attack in this country for a long time. I know my family was largely responsible for my success as far as education goes. Ms. Pierce, thank, I mean, Ms. White, thank you for being here today. And one of the criticisms we hear about school choice is the, and the public charter schools, private schools, lack of accountability. But it seems to me that a system where you have real options, the accountability rests with parents. And what reaction do you have when you hear arguments that parents can't be trusted to make the right decision for their children?
I slightly laugh like I just did, because we are, all of, many of us in this room are parents, and we're intelligent, and we want the best for our children and families. So what parents are you saying can't be trusted? That's the question.
Yeah, exactly. Mr. Pierce, in your testimony, you said you, oops, I am out of time, I'm sorry. Okay, I yield back.
Thank you. Thank you. General Hammond's expired. A gentle lady from Florida, Ms. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and ranking member Fox for holding this hearing. The importance of today's hearing cannot be overstated. There has not been one single education committee hearing focused on the issue of school integration in thirty years, since nineteen eighty-nine, so welcome to this hearing. The landmark Brown versus Board decision led to gains for African-American students in the academic achievement gap by more than half in two decades of public school integration. During the time of integration, I was the principal in Miami-Dade County at a school called Skyway Elementary. It was known as the Little United Nations. It was one-third white, one-third Hispanic, one-third African-American. It was so successful, both academically and socially, that former President Bush sent Education Secretary Lamar Alexander to the school to award the school the America Two Thousand Award for Elementary Schools. He visited to witness its spectacular results firsthand. My students flourished and learned so much from each other, which benefited the entire community. The school is now named Dr. Frederica S. Wilson Elementary School. Unfortunately, many parents fail to understand that attending public schools with diverse enrollment greatly broadens the horizons of all students, irrespective of race. Yet since the nineteen nineties, the number of segregated schools has more than tripled reaching levels not seen since the Jim Co. era. One of the chief factors in the movement toward resegregation is the increased use of private school vouchers. The concept of school vouchers arose in the nineteen fifties as a way for white families to resegregate schools and avoid sending their children to racially integrated schools while still receiving taxpayer funding. The first and perhaps most famous example of voucher usage was a tuition grant program in Prince Edward County, Virginia in the fifties, when this rural community chose to provide white students with vouchers rather than comply with civil rights laws. In nineteen ninety-nine, my home state of Florida established the Florida Opportunity Scholarship Program. It is no coincidence that since this, that this same year, nineteen ninety-nine, Governor Bush also ended affirmative action in education admissions, higher education admissions. The expansions of vouchers in Florida and other locations across the nation further increases socioeconomic and racial segregation. It is evident that the current administration's complete disregard for civil rights and its glaring education budget, which contains five billion per year in funding for school choice programs, is another giant steps toward resegregating America's schools. And I'm certain that Congress will step in again and deny appropriating this funding. My first question goes to Ms. Darling Hammond. Ms. Darling Hammond, how do you think the proliferation of school choice throughout the nation has affected diversity in our public schools?
Well, there are a variety of kinds of school choice, but in the charter element, charters are more segregated than other public schools, both predominantly Black and Latino charters in some places, but also white charters, which are being used in the way that segregation academies were once used in some states. So we see that increasing segregation. That may also be the case with the tuition vouchers and so on. I don't think that's been studied as well as the charter experience. So choice also exists, however, within traditional district-run public schools and is typically managed to increase integration in those cases, as in the Hartford case, as in the work that's going on in San Antonio and elsewhere. So for choice to, within the public school system, to end up creating an opportunity for integration, it has to be managed, and the investments have to be available everywhere. Congresswoman Fudge made the important comment, which you are reinforcing, that equality is not about choice, it's a requirement for every school. Every school in every neighborhood has — Every school in every neighborhood has to be worth choosing, and that's about investment in the quality of the education. And then, given our segregated housing patterns, both we have to address those. There's the delay in the regulations on the affirmatively addressing fair housing rule as well to worry about, but we need then the transportation and other mechanisms that allow kids to get to the schools that allow them to have the experience that you had. If I might, could I also address a comment about the discipline guidance that was made earlier? The, you know, as I was listening to Mr. Pierce's testimony and that of Ms. White, it occurred to me that it really demonstrates how important it is actually to restore the discipline guidance, which offered resources for evidence-based practices to replace suspensions. You can still suspend students under that guidance as is needed, but what was valuable about it was that it gave schools a whole variety of ways through restorative practices, through social-emotional learning, which have been supported as making schools safer in many, many studies and reducing the bullying that Ms. White's child experienced and the kind of disorder that Mr. Pierre experienced. And we have evidence about that. There are, of course, other schools in New York City, one of which I just did a study on in Bronx, in the Bronx, Bronxdale High School, which had all of the characteristics that Mr. Pierre described of being, you know, very unmanaged at a moment in time, but that wasn't because of the discipline-era guidance. They, in fact, put in place the restorative practices, the social-emotional learning, the wraparound services that the Obama-era guidance suggested, and became a much safer school and now a higher-achieving school. We see this nationwide as that guidance was in effect. All across the country, the federal data showed that the percentage of public schools recording one or more incidents of violence, theft, or crimes was lower in 2015, 16, the most recent year, than ever before. And we've seen it in California, where we've had a very assertive approach to reducing unnecessary suspensions and replacing them with guidance around social-emotional learning, anti-bullying practices, restorative practices. And we are now a much safer state. We used to be way above the national average in weapons, fighting, bullying, and now we're way below the national average as we've replaced a tool that was not very successful with tools that are much more successful. When kids are suspended, they often become more badly behaved when they return because they have gotten behind in their academics, they're resentful, they're out of sync, and then you get more disruption in the school. So I just want to make it clear that the evidence is very strong that you can address these needs in a way that is safer for kids.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. A gentleman from Pennsylvania, Mr. Schmucker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've been listening carefully to the testimony, find interesting the discussion in regards to integration, talking about that alongside school choice options. And first, I want to talk about school funding. Dr. Darling Hammond, you mentioned, being from Pennsylvania, you specifically mentioned a situation that I've talked about in Pennsylvania in regards to how we fund our schools, and that is Lower Marion, which is a wealthy suburban school, is spending about $28,000 per student as compared to the school district of Philadelphia, spending about $14,000. So you're absolutely correct. It's about a two-to-one ratio, or at least it was a few years ago when I was Chair of the Education Committee in Pennsylvania State Senate. We did a lot of work because that is inequitable, and every child should have the opportunity for a world-class education regardless of the zip code that they happen to have been born in or reside in. We spent a lot of time with the Basic Education Funding Commission, looking at the factors of need that create a need for additional funding, not less, and we ended up with a new formula distributing the state portion of the dollars based on needs such as poverty, such as the number of English-language learners and so on, and added factors to our funding that directed more money to those schools rather than less. And there are some, traditionally sometimes are urban schools that have the highest need. We've applied that funding to all new dollars going into the system, so it's a change that will take place over a long period of time. But every year in Pennsylvania right now, we're seeing more equitable funding as a result of a new formula that's put in place. There are folks, including myself, who would like to see that happen faster, but it's very difficult to take funding from one school to another. And another big problem we have in Pennsylvania is there's a heavy reliance on local tax dollars, and so you have the ability with the Lower Marion School District, you have that tax base, and you don't as much in Philadelphia. That can generate those local dollars that's needed, so it's one of the problems that we're addressing. We have an actual formula, a criteria within the formula that allows for that and helps it be more equitable. So I agree with that. We should ensure that the resources, resources is a big portion of this issue. We also know that segregation helps to improve outcomes. So policies in place that not only provide for the right resources are important, but policies that ensure that that segregation or the segregation is occurring is also important. Now, here's where I differ from some of the discussion that's going on. All of that exists and is not affected by honest discussions around school choice. And Ms. White, I've talked to so many parents like yourself who felt trapped in a school, much as we're trying to improve and ensure that our public school system is working effectively for every student. Sometimes additional options, additional choices in that system can improve everything. And I understand there's a funding component of this that can be talked about, but I think it's important that we have choices available for parents and for students who today cannot access a great education. We have schools, charter schools in Philadelphia area where there are thousands of parents waiting for an opportunity for their student, and I've spoken to some of those parents who were just overjoyed when they came out on the right side of that lottery and had an opportunity for their kids. So the two are not principles that need to compete with one another. And in fact, when we're talking to parents, it's, they don't really care about the political debate around school choice. And speaking, maybe I'll do, in form of a question, in speaking to other parents who made similar decisions in regards to the decisions that you did around your son's schooling, I mean, do you think any of them do care about the political debate surrounding school choice, or did they just want to have options to make the best decisions for their kids?
Parents just want to have the options available, but they also recognize that if they don't advocate for their children, then their choice will be nil. So they need to advocate, and they also are looking that they might have grandchildren coming up who they want to have better education, so they need to advocate on another level, and it will often mean that we have to get involved politically.
Thank you. I see my time has run out.
Thank you. A gentlelady from Oregon, Ms. Bonamici.
Thank you. We know about the federal role in education, and we know that's equity. And on this 65th anniversary of the historic Brown versus Board of Education decision, we have to acknowledge that we have not, as a country, fulfilled the promise of this landmark case. We saw, of course, progress in the '70s and '80s through strong federal support to integrate schools, but today we're seeing the resegregation of schools, a rise in racially and socio-economically isolated schools. This is all in the 2016 GAO report. Thank you, now Chairman Scott, for requesting that. You know, the Obama administration was taking steps to address school segregation and force civil rights protections, but unfortunately, the Trump administration is showing hostility toward those efforts, seeking to remove the use of disparate impact regulations. They've rolled back critical guidance that's protected students' civil rights. I'm extremely concerned about the proposal for what they're calling education freedom scholarships, which are essentially vouchers that would exacerbate inequality and drain important public resources. We must reaffirm our commitment to Brown by holding the administration accountable and enforcing the civil rights laws. I want to, Dr. Darling Hammond, follow up on Representative Davis's question. A recent report by EdBuild found that there's a $23 billion racial funding gap between school districts serving students of color and school districts serving predominantly white students. That's a pretty serious gap, and we know that funding is one piece of the challenge here. My colleague from Pennsylvania was talking about changes at the state level. What are the best ways to address that funding gap, and how would addressing it begin to solve the goals of inequality? And I, thank you.
First of all, I want to say how pleased I was to hear Congressman Schmucker talk about what's going on in Pennsylvania. I did my dissertation in 1978 on school finance in Pennsylvania, so we've been waiting a long time, and it's glad that that's underway. I think that only about a dozen states in the country right now are organizing their financing of schools so that there's an equal playing field and some consideration of a little bit more for kids living in higher-need situations. The other states are all, have not yet redesigned their school finance systems to allow for that. It strikes me that in the ESSA and in the ESEA over the years, we now ask states to demonstrate how they're going to make progress in academic achievement and outcomes for students across districts and schools. I think we ought to ask them as well, as they receive federal funding, to make progress in equal educational opportunity.
That's great, and I do want to get in a couple more questions. I appreciate that. Chancellor Carranza, you stated in your district that you leverage federal Title IV funding under every Student Succeeds Act for a diversity grant program. Thank you for bringing that up, Dr. Darling Hammond. And when Secretary DeVos recently testified before this committee, I expressed serious concern about the proposed elimination of Title IV grant funding. Fortunately, just yesterday, the House Appropriations Committee announced it's included $1.3 billion for this program in its proposed bill, which I will fight to pass into law. Can you say more about how these funds support integration efforts in your district and what a reduced federal investment in Title IV would mean to this work, adding to what Dr. Darling Hammond said?
Absolutely. So they're critical funds that we use to support the efforts that are at the ground level. So District 15 is a great example of that. This is a community-driven, parent-led, parent-voice level. We don't only want to engage our parents, we want to empower parents. And when you empower parents with a voice, and then you give them a mechanism through which they can not only have a process, but what comes from that process gets funded and gets implemented, you have now empowered parents to actually be able to advocate for their children, which is what we all want. These funds allow us to be able to do that, to cede the funding, to have facilitation, to bring people together, have childcare, have food for parents that have worked all day. So they really are what we would call the equity innovation funding in our system.
Terrific. Thank you. And Mr. Lewson, last year I wrote to Secretary DeVos, opposing the department's decision to delay the equity in IDEA regulation, which aimed to address widespread disparities between white students and students of color with disabilities, and I was glad to see that the District Court in the District of Columbia vacated the department's delay of the rule. Unfortunately, during her testimony before this committee, the secretary refused to commit to implementing the rule. Can you describe how enforcement of this regulation would encourage equity in education?
So the regulation requires that every state, look at districts, for racial disparities in identification, for kids with special education, as well as placement, as well as discipline. And in fact, the leading reason why states currently identify their districts is for racial disparities and discipline. But that rescinding those regulations, that they have since been restored because the federal court said the reasoning was arbitrary and capricious. And it was all based on this fear of quotas that had no there-there. There was no evidence that they were able to cite to support that argument. And I would point out, they raised the same kinds of fear of quotas as well as the discredited research in rescinding the, in removing the discipline guidance. So it's really very disturbing.
I see my time has expired. I yield back. Thank you.
Thank you. I understand the gentleman from Virginia wants to go next. Is that because you have a conflict?
It is, Mr. Chairman.
If you could send my regrets, because I don't think I'm going to be able to make it.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. A gentleman from Virginia.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate your leadership on this issue, and I'm thankful that as a committee, we're remembering the 65th anniversary of Brown v. Board. This court case holds significance for me because of the heroics of a young lady and fellow Virginian named Barbara Rose Johns. At the age of 16, Ms. Johns led a walk out of Moton High School located in Prince Edward County, and she embodies the leadership and bravery that we should instill in current and future students. Her walkout was one of the five cases, Davis v. County Board of Prince Edward County, that was rolled into Brown v. Board, but it held the distinction of being the only student-initiated case. And it's significant because her attorney, one of her attorneys, Oliver Hill, his childhood home was in Roanoke in my district. She's a shining example of the importance of ensuring that all students have access to a quality education and the very significance of that fight. And for her contributions and many others, I'll continue to fight to protect opportunities for all students. So given that, Ms. White, you talked in your testimony about the need to be empowered as a parent who's trying to give the best opportunities to your children. What's the effect on parents when they feel disempowered and left with no choices with respect to their children's education?
When one feels disempowered, the motivations to go on sometimes is lacking, and so that's why it's extremely important for parents to feel empowered. At the school where I work currently, one of the things that we say is that old adage that children who are loved at home come to school to learn, and children who aren't come to school to be loved. And so we are creating environments or need to create environments for families, not only to feel empowered in their educational choices, but to feel empowered as human beings so that they treat their families better, so that their children, when they come to school, are better able to learn.
You mentioned that Brown v. Board was intended to empower parents. How can we, as legislators, fight to protect what others like Barbara Rose Johns have fought for and continue to expand opportunities for all families?
I'm sorry, I don't want to take away your time, but I need to hear that again.
How can we, as legislators, help fight to protect what others like Barbara Rose Johns have fought for and continue to expand those opportunities for all families?
I've heard several examples of things that have been working in various forums in order to desegregate schools, and legislators need to know that it hasn't worked thus far, some of the things haven't worked thus far. And the only reason that I mention school choice is that it seems to like be a transition or something to use in the interim until we get to that ideal place where there, regardless of where a student goes, that they receive that excellent education.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Now you have back the balance of my time.
Thank you. A gentleman from California, Mr. Canno.
Thank you, Chairman Scott, for this very important and timely hearing on this landmark case. Brown v. Board of Education is very important to me as a person of color and as a former teacher. My goal every day that I was in the classroom was to prepare my students for success. Immediately following the Brown decision, we saw immediate results in the shrinking of the achievement gap as integration continued. Unfortunately, we are getting further away from that goal because of intentional attacks on civil rights by various administrations. Chancellor Carranza, New York City was, is one of the largest school systems in the country. It is also one of the most segregated systems, and I say that not as a criticism, it's just a statement of fact, and it's reflective of what we're seeing across the country. So I'm not singling it out in New York City. How do you suggest that we reverse the trend of resegregation that we're currently seeing in the schools across the country? Specifically, what role should the federal government take?
Thank you, sir. No offense taken. It's true. So we are taking it on head-on. The role of the federal government, as I've mentioned in my testimony, is we have to have the guidance in place. The guidance and the rules by which we are looking at who we serve is critically important. In a system like New York City, where 70% of the students are black and Latino students, the systems, the structures, the policies that tend to either uplift students, those particular students, all students, but the systems, policies, and protocols that we have in place that tend to not support those students, we need to look at. And we know that in admissions policies, we know in disciplinary policies, we know that when you have a propensity to suspend certain types of students disproportionately or to identify disproportionate numbers of students for specialized programs like students with disabilities, et cetera, you have to look at the protocols and systems that generate those kinds of results. The role of the federal government is critical in keeping us accountable, keeping... The role of the federal government is critical in keeping us accountable, keeping states accountable. This can't be a one-by-one effort. It has to be a systemic effort, and the role of the federal government is critically important, in my opinion.
Well, we also know that as the federal government has stopped enforcing civil rights, the progress that was made to shrink the achievement gap stalled. In California, high achievement gaps still remain between African-American and white students, as well as Latino and white students. Chancellor, what do you think, do you think it's possible to make progress on the achievement gap without addressing school segregation?
I think they are inextricably linked, because schools are microcosms of society. And students walk through the threshold of our schools, and they bring with them their experiences, their learned and lived experiences where they come from. So they are inextricably linked. What we do have in the school system is the ability to create empowering environments, uplifting environments. So you can't separate the two.
What does it mean for children of color who suffer the repercussions of widening achievement and opportunity gaps?
We're robbing the very future of this country of future talent. So the implications are literally a matter of life and death. And as the research has shown, that when you exclude a student from an educational environment, when the first option is to kick them out of school, you set them on a path that many have referred to as the school-to-prison pipeline. Instead of funneling kids into the school-to-prison pipeline, why don't we keep students in school and continue to educate? That's really the genesis of what we're talking about.
I recently saw some statistics put forward by Professor Chetty of Harvard, and he, his data would seem to imply, he uses data, and it seemed to imply that this was, that segregation, segregated neighborhoods also means a reduction of income mobility. It's not just the school-to-prison pipeline, but income mobility is also ample. Would you agree with that?
I would.
Ms. Britton, in your testimony, you stated that housing policy can also play a role in integrating schools. We notice high rent prices across this country ultimately forcing low-income students and families into concentrated poverty, and we also see in that concentrated poverty segregated schools. What can the federal government do to reduce discriminatory practices that consequently lead to segregated schools?
The federal government can first reinstate those new regulations that would affirmatively further integration in fair housing that was developed coincidentally, related, though, during the Obama administration. It took 50 years, from the 1968 Fair Housing Act to 2018, to pass those regulations. Housing is the number-one cause of racial segregation in schools, because most schools are designed to create student assignment plans based upon neighborhood lines. That's why, among other things, we who seek to pursue greater integration and quality education move those lines to choice, the kind of choice that Dr. Nadine Hammond mentioned, such as in magnet schools, and the kind of choice, such as I mentioned, in creating voluntary integrated school assignment plans for quality education and reduce racial isolation. So yes, we must link housing integration inextricably with educational integration.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry I went over. I yield back.
Kansas, Mr. Watkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm honored to be here today to remember, recognize, and celebrate the 65th anniversary of the landmark Brown v. Board of Education decision. May 17, 1954, the Supreme Court decision ruled legal segregation unconstitutional on the grounds that separating, separate educational facilities based on race are anything but equal. Mr. Chairman, I'm honored today specifically because by this hearing's own title, we are remembering icons of the civil rights in the United States who call Topeka, Kansas, home, just as my family and I do. Lynda Brown was just nine years old in 1950, when her father, Oliver Brown, enrolled her into the all-white Sumner Elementary School, which afterward she was denied access. This bold and defiant action, as well as the actions of many others from around the country, are why Lynda Brown and her family became the namesake of a ruling so instrumental to the tearing down of barriers of state-sanctioned segregation. In place of repugnant and blatantly immoral segregation laws, this ruling would seek to usher in a new atmosphere of opinions, integration, and communities of understanding. Lynda Brown's legacy, as well as the legacies of those courageous individuals who joined the Browns, families, and students from Delaware, South Carolina, Virginia, and the District of Columbia, represent the very best that our nation has to offer. It is therefore, with great reverence and respect, that we should also remember Lynda Brown today. As nearly one year ago, on March 27, 2018, she passed away in my hometown of Topeka, Kansas. She will be loved, and she will be most assuredly missed. However, her legacy should not be in vain, and continuing to build on her work of equal education options for all is an honor I'm proud to work towards. So Ms. White, in your testimony, you stated that Brown v. Board of Education, the decision was meant to empower parents, like Oliver Brown sought to be in 1950 by enrolling Lynda into the Sumner Elementary School. Could you elaborate on your points more, please, ma'am?
Certainly. As we think about Brown versus Board of Education, we, many of us recognize that it is the most important civil rights issue of this era. And there are various ways to come to this. I mentioned that there was not a one-size-fits-all for all jurisdictions, for all districts, but empowering parents to make the choices that they have available at that time goes a long way to having equality in education.
Thank you so much. And thank you, Mr. Chairman. I yield back.
Thank you. The gentlelady from North Carolina, Ms. Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to the ranking members, well, for holding this hearing and to the witnesses for your testimony. Thank you for being here today. I do want to acknowledge the 65th anniversary of Brown versus Board of Education. Not a happy birthday, I think, but I do want to acknowledge it and to speak to the frustration that I feel due to its unfulfilled promise. Many of you may know I am from Greensboro, North Carolina. I lived there for a number of years, taught as a professor at Bennett College, raised my children there. They all went to the public schools, did quite well. It's also the home of the Greensboro Four, the nation's first sit-ins. I'm a product of that movement and of Brown versus Board and myself, and our nation, I believe, are better off for it. The problem I see is that policymakers have lost what Brown v. Board means, its emphasis on data-driven research, its recognition that separate can never be equal, its challenge to policymakers to ensure that all Americans, regardless of race, have equal access to one of our greatest civil rights, education, a right that W. D. Du Bois talked about when he said of all the civil rights for which the world has struggled and fought for for 500 years, the right to learn is undoubtedly the most fundamental. After the Board versus, the Brown versus the Board of Education of 1954, there was massive resistance to school desegregation in the South, including county-based school districts breaking off from their larger school districts to resist integration. We currently see this happening across the country, including unfortunately in my own congressional district in Charlotte, Mecklenburg, a district that were pioneers in school integration efforts. Ms. Darling Hammond, can you describe for us the racial and the economic impact of school secession?
I was thinking about that before you said it, because it is occurring in North Carolina and other places where, in a county school district, a little enclave will seek to secede, usually a small white enclave, resegregating the schools and taking greater wealth, which accrues to the property taxes in that arena with them. So it is a problem both for economic equality, for the quality of schools in that county, and for integration.
Okay. Yeah, I heard the word "choice" used a lot. I wonder if you'd just comment briefly about that in terms of Brown versus Board of Education and its intent?
Well, I think I just made the comment a few moments ago that reinforced Congresswoman Fudge's point that quality is not about choice, it's about a requirement for every single school. So the goal has to be that every school is worth choosing, that is to say, every neighborhood school, which is the most popular choice for parents, is invested in, in a way that the question is, perhaps if you have a different philosophy or something, you might, in New York City, among the district-run public schools, go to the Arts Magnet or something like that, but that there is a good neighborhood school in every neighborhood that is the plot promise of Brown.
Right, thank you. Let me move on. I'm running out of time. Chancellor Carranza, thank you for what you do to address the issue in our nation's largest public school system. A major contributor to racial segregation in public schools has been decades of white flight, the movement of white families from urban centers to suburbs where the schools are better. So can you, can local and state leaders, or how can we overcome this challenge to achieve more racially diverse schools? And can you tell us a little bit about what you're doing in New York?
Thank you, yes. So the issue of parents wanting a good school, I want to emphasize what Professor Darling Hammond has just said about every school in every neighborhood should be a school worth choosing. By that, we mean there's programming that is not only supported but desired by the community. We are investing in that kind of programming in our school system. In the New York City Department of Education, where we have over 1,800 school choices, talk about choice. There is choice for pretty much anything you want to do. The issue then becomes, how do students and parents know what those choices are? How do we provide them with the ability to avail themselves of the choices as they make those particular choices? For policymakers, both at the local, state, and federal level, it's incredibly important that in the spirit of Brown versus Board of Education, we are tackling the issue of segregation. And unfortunately, there are policies that are promulgated and lack of guidance that is not put forth that contribute to that resegregation of schools.
Right, okay. Well, thank you very much. I'm about to run out of time, Mr. Chairman. I'll yield back.
Thank you. Gentleman from Wisconsin, Mr. Growth.
Thank you. Mr. Pierre, thanks for being here. You've got some kind of guts in here. You mentioned things that aren't mentioned by some of the other witnesses. And I'll comment on a couple of them here. In your testimony, you say these problems are aggravated, of course, in communities with high rates of family dysfunction. Could you elaborate that a little bit?
If you were to visit predominantly, some predominantly minority communities in New York City, certainly not all, you'd find, I think, that there is a correlation between students, there's a correlation between behavioral problems and broken families. Someone here, I think it was Ms. White, who said that if students don't have love at home, they come to school in a very bad mood. And I think that's likely true.
We have a lot of people, other people here who are experts. Does anybody, Mr. Pierre thinks that maybe some of the problems for some of these kids at school are due to the families they're from, the family structure? Are there any studies on that to show if that's a big, if that could be a cause of gap between test scores or graduation or whatever?
If I can just say, many studies have shown for years that students who come from two-parent households do better, but the social agenda of the Democratic Party forbids them from promoting two-parent households.
I know we have a lot of programs out there kind of discouraging forming of two-parent families. Why do you think, with all the people asking questions here, that that topic never comes up?
I have no clue. I'll be 25 in July. I've spent my entire life wondering why progressives, Democrats, don't speak more about the dissolution of the Black family. This is something that's been going on since 1963. It's something that's now happening in many white families. It just doesn't make sense to me that you could tell an entire community that 70% of births out of wedlock is acceptable. It's not.
And you think that that can result in the children, they're not doing as well in school?
Absolutely. And I think that as a country, we take, we don't take Black Americans seriously if we allow some of these cultural problems to persist. As I said earlier, I mean, someone like Barack Obama went to a private school in Hawaii. His Black experience is totally different than mine. My mother gave birth to me just months after her 18th birthday, and she did an okay job, but she didn't always have all the answers.
Okay, well, it's interesting. You've been in a variety of New York schools, a variety of schools in North Carolina, so you're certainly qualified. And I, like I said, it's a mystery to me, not only on this topic, but other topics, why that's not brought up by people who purport to claim that they want to solve some problems here. You say something else. In many cases, students are influenced by mainstream culture, which often encourages minority youth towards transgressive behavior. You want to elaborate on that a little?
Yes. Henry Gates Lewis Jr., a prominent African-American Studies scholar from Harvard University, once observed that, at some point in the '60s, it became fashionable for members of the Black and upper class and middle class to aspire to a more authentic idea of Blackness, which in the '60s became urban rebellious against the 1960s. Gates saw how terrible this was for the Black community. He said, you know, by the 1990s, you have Tommy Hilfiger pushing the thug life and the gangster life. Rap music, of course, for years is starting to be a bit more female-friendly, but for years, it encouraged poor treatment of women. It encouraged secular values, not going to church, an emphasis on material things. I mean, yeah.
Wow. I wonder why these artists are promoted then in the popular culture, like some geniuses who should be followed around. Can you guess why the popular culture, the people who decide who's going to be on the cover of the big magazines keep promoting these people?
It's what sells. I don't think they take Black Americans seriously. It's embarrassing to me when I hear people say that Black students can only get a good education in a white school. It seems to me that Black Americans, who have a noble history in this country, should have some role in making our communities attractive so that people want to come to us.
One more question. I'm sorry, they only give me five minutes. Just playing around, looking at the numbers, it appears as though the District of Columbia, if it were a state, would have, I think, the fourth or fifth highest spending per pupil in the country. Their test scores are the lowest in the country. If money is the answer to education, how do you explain the Washington, DC schools? And I'll, we'll give it, I don't know, Dr. Darling?
It's what happens when Congress tries to run a school system.
We agree.
I could also respond to your earlier question.
That's okay. I'm out of time.
Go ahead.
Yes. So I think it's, we do see a pattern that racially isolated schools tend to adopt much harsher discipline policies, including some charter schools that have embraced this broken-windows philosophy that's very, it's racially oppressive. We know about it from Ferguson. And the problem with that is, you're just kicking kids out of school right and left for all these minor offenses and treating kids as if you believe they are your future criminals. And there have been charter schools like Achievement First that have been investigated by OCR and settled and have changed their policies. They've said themselves that that was a misguided approach.
Mr. Loosen, you are not talking about what Mr. Pierre talked about at all.
So on dysfunctional families, though, there are, there are children who come from, who've been exposed to domestic abuse. We need to take all comers. Schools need to have trauma-informed responses. I don't see how it makes any sense, if you think that the problem is in the home, either because of domestic abuse or kids who are in dysfunctional homes, how is sending more kids home, out of school, going to solve that problem?
I guess my only response to that is that it starts with a cultural change at the bottom and not just through institutions and government.
Keep swinging, Mr. Pierre. Thanks.
Gentleman from Pennsylvania, Ms. Wild.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just note that the testimony of Mr. Pierre at age 25 fails to note that a better education has been closely correlated to increased stability in families. Having said that, I am also from Pennsylvania, as was one of my colleagues on the other side of the aisle who asked you questions. And this is for Professor Britton. EdBuild, a nonprofit organization that you're undoubtedly familiar with, focuses on common sense and fairness in the way states fund public schools. sense and fairness in the way states fund public schools. And it has produced a report finding a $23 billion racial funding gap between school districts serving students of color and school districts serving predominantly white students. In my district is the city of Allentown, it is the third-largest city in Pennsylvania, and it is surrounded by schools, suburban schools, the Allentown School District is surrounded by suburban school districts that are predominantly Caucasian and have a robust property tax base. Allentown, on the other hand, the fourth-largest school district in Pennsylvania, is 71% Hispanic, 15% Black, 10% White. It is currently facing a $28 million deficit for 2019-20. It has stated, the school board has stated that it may not be able to meet payroll. And they have a $60 million charter school bill, and, of course, rising costs of English language learning, predominantly because of an influx of students from Puerto Rico following the hurricane, and, of course, special education. So, with that as the backdrop, I’d ask you, Professor Britton, if you could describe some of the disparities that we see between the experiences of students attending schools that are primarily white compared to the experience of students attending schools that are primarily comprised of minority students? And if you could, in your answer, address the differences in outcomes for these students after they leave school? Thank you.
Congressman Wild, I would say that what you articulated is the 21st century form of what Brown versus Board of Education was 65 years ago. Brown dealt with the question of race, and it was primarily white and Black. Today, in the 21st century, we’re dealing with concentrated poverty and class. And just as de jure segregation, that is, by law, for whites to attend white schools, non-whites to attend non-white schools, today, that barrier is the district boundary line. And what you described in Allentown and its surrounding districts is what Connecticut, through its Supreme Court case in the 1996 Chef versus O’Neal, said was the boundary line between urban and suburban, between some integrated and affluent and achieving, and some poor, and some highly racially isolated school districts. And that was the cause of the inequality of education, therefore, that must be the remedy. And that is where we are today. Lynda, do you have a few more statistics on those disparities? By the way, I’ve always said, I know where my legal expertise on educational equality ends, and my ignorance on sound, basic education policy begins. And therefore, I’ve always surrounded myself in my pursuit for legal equality in education with intellectual scholars like Lynda Darling Hammond.
That’s very kind. Just in a word, the outcomes of that segregated experience are that we know that children who’ve been to integrated schools, which typically also do have greater resources, have much better graduation rates, much better achievement, and higher wages later in life, and lower poverty rates. So, we have a lot of evidence about that. My colleague, Rucker Johnson, just did a book, Children of the Dream, I recommend it to you, and it really lays out that whole set of...
And can we assume that during their in-school experience, that students in these school districts that are suffering financially and have become de facto segregated are having fewer elective courses, lower rates of teacher satisfaction, I mean, I just mentioned that the city of Allentown may not be able to meet payroll, one can only imagine how that affects the ability of teachers to teach.
Cancelled courses, larger class sizes, greater number of unqualified teachers, which gets back to the DC question that was asked earlier, high, high proportions in DC of teachers who are not trained, same thing in schools like the ones that you’re describing in Pennsylvania.
Older textbooks, fewer field trips, all of those kinds of things.
And that’s been documented over and over again.
Thank you, I yield back. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. General Lady from Washington, Dr. Schreier.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to all of our witnesses today, thank you for coming. I am a child in the 1970s, and it was during my elementary school years that this great experiment in busing began, and so, my elementary school later became a magnet school in some of the ways that we talked about, all in hopes of integrating our schools and giving every child a shot at their best possible life. Now, I also saw some of the backlash to this, the so-called white flight, many of my fellow students left to go to private schools, and so, I saw both sides of this. And one of the reasons that I joined this committee on education and labor is that kids don’t get to pick their parents, they don’t get to pick the number of parents they have, they don’t get to pick the color of their skin, or their zip code, or their income level. And as a pediatrician, I take care of kids from all walks of life, and we all know that giftedness does not know economics, giftedness does not know the color of your skin, but what does make a difference in your ultimate outcome is whether you can use that giftedness, and whether you get the education that will really launch you into success. And so, I consider it my job here to make sure that every child gets his or her best chance, and early childhood education is part of that, but integrating our schools is also part of that, and your testimonies were incredibly compelling in laying out what a difference that makes, and how it lifts all ships. And so, Chancellor Karanza, I wanted to ask if you could discuss why school integration is the appropriate strategy, but also, what you see as today’s, modern-day barriers to achieving real school diversity?
Thank you. I would also just say, I agree with you that high-quality, early childhood education is a game changer in many, many communities. In New York, we have universal pre-K, we’ve added 3K, and it’s, and we’re seeing how that is changing the game. You know, it’s interesting, because many folks that I will talk to will say, I am all about integrating our schools, I want integrated schools, but they stop when it means that their children go to school with other kids of color. So, the political will that I’ve talked about is incredibly important, we can’t just say we’re for it, and yet, we won’t go to that diverse school, we won’t go to that school in that quote-unquote neighborhood. So, this is critically important. And as we look, from an equity perspective, in investing our resources in developing programs and good options in neighborhood schools, we’re looking at historically under-invested neighborhoods that we’re making those investments in, because it’s critically important that that local school becomes a hub for that community that is a good choice in that community. So, they’re inextricably linked, but they are incredibly, incredibly tied to the notion that you can’t just say you want to have integrated schools, you have to also make that a reality.
Thank you. I also wanted to ask Dr. Darling Hammond about the segregation that we see now based on economics, that some say that segregation persists today because of individual choice, people choose where to live, people self-segregate, and that people of color will choose not to live or learn alongside white neighbors. Could you please comment about this being a so-called choice?
A lot to say about this as well, but the history of segregation and housing policy is very extensive, it still goes on today, and in fact, we are waiting still on rules to correct some of the lack of fair housing building, as well as segregation in sales processes of housing and so on. So, I don’t think that that’s a choice. People live where they can live, and then, they go to the schools that are available to them. And one of the things that will encourage greater integration within that context, in addition to housing policy, is building and investing in good schools in every neighborhood, so that it will be easy for those people that Chancellor talked about, that to want to go to a school that is going to be a high-quality school, perhaps in a neighborhood other than the one that they live in.
And I, it looks like I have just a few seconds left, so I thought I would comment just for a moment about blaming education on social ills, looking for an excuse to not integrate classrooms by looking at social ills or the number of parents in a household. We all want stable households, we all want parents who support and love their children, there’s no question there. But what we do know is, kids don’t get to pick their background, that the best thing that we can do for them is put them in a school where they can have positive peers, positive role models, and teachers, one adult in a child’s life who loves them and guides them is the remedy, and that will then parlay them into the future that they really need to break the cycle.
Thank you. General Lady from Connecticut, Ms. Hayes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I’d like to thank all the witnesses for being here today. In my congressional office, I have a Norman Rockwell painting hanging, and it’s the problems we all live with, we all live with. And it is a portrait of Ruby Bridges walking to school just six years after the Brown versus Board of Education decision. I look at this painting every day to remember why I’m here. I remember that while this painting depicts something that happened 60 years ago, it could truly talk about what we’re going through today, inequity in education still exists. And we further promote division with comments like, “Keep swinging,” in a hearing where we are looking for solutions to the problems that we all live with. Today, this Department of Education is openly hostile to civil rights enforcement and school integration, and actively advancing policy that will continue to push some students forward while leaving so many behind. In a hearing before this committee, Secretary DeVos hailed school choice as the silver bullet, ignoring the fact that choice often leads to more disparity, more segregation, more inequity. We heard the secretary speak of the 1 million students who are on waitlists for charter and choice schools. I remind everyone that we have a responsibility to educate 50 million-plus students, not just 1 million. What happens to the rest of those kids? Ms. White, I hear you, and I agree with you. My challenge is that the opportunities that you speak about for your son Michael, I want that for all students, whether they have a parent at home or not. So, we have to make sure that every public school works, that every student has access to those opportunities. As an educator, as a mother, I always ask myself one question, a guiding question, is this the education I would want for my child? If I couldn’t answer yes to that every single time, then I had to figure out something different to do. And I challenge everyone here today to ask yourself that same question, is this the education you would want for your child? Don’t worry about my child, for your child. I challenge my colleagues on the other side of the aisle to ask themselves that question, because what we’re talking about is pockets of excellence. People talk about one school, or one district, or one community, or one place where it worked. Is that what you would want for your child, to be educated in all of those other places? So, my question today is for Mr. Lowson. In the final report of the Federal Commission on School Safety that was prepared by Secretary DeVos, it recommended a rescission of the 2014 discipline guidances. In its justification for this recommendation, the report cited research that seemingly suggested that there are innate behavioral differences between white students and students of color. Can you comment on these claims, the research supporting them, and what it means for the federal government to include them in official documents?
Yes, I think it’s disgraceful that that research was cited. That study was refuted by another very conservative researcher, as I mentioned earlier, who did the identical study with the same database, but instead of just looking at whether students were suspended or not, they looked at how many times students had been suspended. Now, there were all kinds of other problems with that study that should have raised red flags, but that discredited, the discreditation of the study happened before it was cited as a reason to rescind the guidance. So, reliance on that kind of flimsy information is the same kind of way of decision-making that was determined to be arbitrary and capricious when they tried to rescind the special education regulations on racial disproportionality.
Thank you so much, and that’s not partisan, that’s just, if we all seek to improve outcomes for kids, then we should be finding good information and conducting ourselves accordingly. I’m going to jump ahead to Professor Britton, who hails from my home state of Connecticut, where I saw the Chef versus O’Neal case play out, and I’ve actually seen the results of it. What can we learn as a nation from the lessons of the Chef case? I mean, I know we still have some challenges and some things that we have to do on the ground level, but what can we learn to move forward so that almost has a model to improve outcomes?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Member Hayes, and former National Teacher of the Year.
I know a little something about education.
I say that all of the people who have been involved in the Chef movement all these many years, many lawyers, many activists, many educators, certainly many parents, many students, all of which deserve far more credit than is given to me, we have learned, as Rodney King said, can we get along? We have learned from the beginning that we had a multiracial coalition seeking education. Somewhat jokingly, we had the first San Juan, Puerto Rico school district on the mainland of the United States. So, we had to convince the Canos that it was in their interest not only to pursue forms of bilingual education, but also integration. We had urban and suburban, and therefore, that is what I’ve learned in the 60-plus years since then.
Thank you so much, I’m embarrassed that we’re even having this hearing today, that we’re even have, still continuing this discussion. I’m sorry for going over, Mr. Chair, I yield back.
Thank you. Gentleman from Maryland, Mr. Trone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Earlier this month, I had the opportunity to ask Secretary DeVos about her department was addressing the issues that we’re discussing today. I was concerned and disappointed when the secretary dodged my questions twice about whether she believes racial segregation posed a threat to the educational opportunities for children of color. Dr. Darling Hammond, I’d like to pose the same question to you. Do you believe racial segregation in public schools poses a threat to the educational opportunity for children of color?
Well, we have a lot of evidence that it does, because segregation by race is typically in this country now also associated with concentrated poverty and under-resourcing of schools. So, the combination places young people at risk in ways that are unnecessary, since we know what we could alternatively be doing. And we have a few states that have made the investments that are necessary for equitable and paritable parity funding with the kinds of strategies that Professor Britton just described with early childhood education and qualified teachers, and you see the achievement gap reduce and achievement for all students move forward.
The secretary also responded then that every, she’s concerned about every student, no matter whether they’re, where they are, or where they go to school. How does segregation negatively impact students of all races?
Well, we can see in our society the desperate need for people to be able to work and live together productively, and we’re experiencing so many events that show that the segregation we have experienced is flaring up in adult life in very, sometimes violent and unfortunate ways. Everyone benefits from being in an integrated setting, and the studies show that not only is there better intergroup relations, but more critical thinking, more problem-solving, more capacity that people develop in the settings.
No question about it. In 2016, GAO found public schools have actually become more segregated by race in class any time since 1960. Professor Britton, in your opinion, what’s the biggest reason behind this persistent racial segregation in education?
As my dear colleague Gary Orfield of the UCLA Civil Rights Project has traced, it’s a commendation, a combination of the abandonment of school integration, some of which we heard today, by the executive branch of the federal government at times, certainly in the abandonment of school integration restrictions by the Supreme Court justices, and further by various educational executives in the higher level of the Department of Education. Further, the segregation in housing is still the number-one cause of the segregation in education, and programs such as housing vouchers and programs to extend opportunities for advantage in living are all a factor in the continuing segregation 65 years after Brown versus Board of Education.
Mind-boggling, 65 years we’re still here. It’s embarrassing. One issue we discuss today is the fact that the Department of Education is making it harder, not easier, for schools to voluntarily address segregation issues. Chancellor, what do you see as the potential benefits for New York City students if the federal government were to increase its support for efforts to diversify schools?
It would, it would be symbiotic with the efforts that we are undertaking at a local level to increase the engagement process, to engage in the development of programming, to engage in the development of integrated, integration plans in our city. You need to have an alignment of both federal, state, and local laws and policies, we’re taking care of... We're taking care of it locally. We need to have that continuum at a federal level as well.
In closing, when I asked Secretary DeVos about the rescission of diversity guidance, I was shocked to hear she was not familiar with the guidance that her own agency had rescinded, her own agency. Even with the administration's apparent hostility toward increasing student diversity, I'm hopeful when I see students, students themselves across the country, including those in my home area, Montgomery County, Maryland, organizing and taking bold efforts to achieve educational equity. I hope Secretary DeVos can learn a few things from you folks on this panel today, and thank you for your leadership. Mr. Chairman, I yield.
Thank you. We have a couple other members on the way, but I'll recognize myself at this time, beginning with Dean Britton. Dean Britton, after the Kentucky and Washington State cases with the voluntary desegregation plans were thrown out, how difficult is it to actually voluntarily desegregate the case? And how much of a disappointment was it that the opening, open doors, expanding opportunities grants, which gave professional technical assistance? How disappointing was the loss of those grants?
As your fellow congressman said in relationship to the Voting Rights Act, John Lewis said it was a dagger in the heart of enforcing civil rights. It was a big, big loss. The 2007 Parents Involved in Community Schools was the biggest hit on school integration since Brown versus Board of Education in 1954. Nevertheless, though wounded, it continued. And when people turned to the Obama administration creation of guidance that it took them two years to create, from the time of the inauguration until 2011, all the civil rights communities participated with the government, parents, children, civil rights advocates, policymakers.
The money would have been used for technical assistance to develop voluntary plans that could withstand constitutional challenge, is that right?
That's correct.
Now, we've heard that charter schools actually make matters worse in terms of integration, is that right?
That is correct.
How have freedom of choice cases, freedom of choice plans fared in litigation over school integration?
When we go back to the immediate post-Brown era, 1955, 56, 57, it was that freedom of choice that was the first major decision after Brown where the Supreme Court struck down freedom of choice. It was freedom in theory, but it wasn't not freedom in practicality, because 99% of all the whites stayed at the white school, only a few percent of the black students transferred from the all-black school to the white school. So this is a modern-day form of freedom of choice, to say that by creating these charter schools and having no guidelines around where the schools are placed, or the relationship to the students' assignments being taken in the public schools, is like creating a new, modern, 21st-century freedom of choice to perpetuate segregation in education.
Thank you. Ms. Darling Hammond, you indicated that one of the reasons that African-Americans do better in integrated schools is that the schools are actually better. Have you seen, how often do you see low-income schools predominantly black actually funded better than the nearby white schools?
That's a very rare occurrence. Typically, in at least 30 states, you will see disparities going the other direction, where concentrations of Black and Latino students in high-poverty schools are funded at much lower levels than other schools around them.
And what's wrong with dealing with problems in schools by letting a handful of students go somewhere else and not dealing with the underlying problems? What's wrong with that strategy?
Obviously, the obligation is to every child. And, you know, competition, if it's a winners-and-losers game, is not actually dealing with the promise of Brown, which is high-quality education for everyone.
Thank you. And Chancellor, you indicated that when you integrated the schools, what happened to achievement?
The evidence is achievement raises for all students.
Thank you. And Mr. Lowson, exactly what is defiance as a violation, and why is, what happened when you allowed people to be suspended for defiance, and what happened after the, that policy was abolished?
One of the problems, defiance, it's really an even broader category. It's disruption or defiance. And in California, well, one of the problems is that this allows for a great deal of perception and subjectivity. And where we have the kinds of vague, minor offenses that are very subjectively determined, we tend to see things like implicit racial bias play a much larger role in whose behavior is identified as being problems in the first place, and then who gets the response of an out-of-school suspension. There have been quite a few studies to show that black students are actually treated more harshly for the same kinds of offenses. So when they eliminated that particular policy in Los Angeles, we saw dramatic, and that was K through 12, we saw a dramatic reduction in this use of suspension and an increase in days of instruction for the kids who are no longer suspended, obviously, but an increase in graduation rates as a result. So this idea that, you know, to have, basically, the idea is you have to close the discipline gap if you want to close the achievement gap.
Thank you. My term's expired. General Lady from Illinois, Ms. Underwood is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sixty-five years ago, the Brown versus Board of Education decision ruled that segregation in public education is unconstitutional. But as we know, it takes real work to translate that equality in theory into equity in practice. And our responsibility in Congress is to ensure our amazing teachers and educators have the resources that they need to fully and equally invest in all of our kids. When I talk to key, when I talk to teachers at home in Illinois's 14th District, one of their top priorities on this issue is fixing the underfunding of Title I schools. So Dr. Darling Hammond, how could adequately funding Title I help advance equity in public education?
Well, in many ways, that would include equitably funding by state, as well as more adequate funding within states. And in those high-poverty settings, if you can put the resources as is allowed under Title I into stronger, more qualified, more continuous teaching force, into better instructional programs, into the wraparound services and supports that are needed, you get much better outcomes, and we have a lot of evidence about that.
Excellent. And so can you talk about some of the resources that students in these schools would have if Title I was adequately funded? And could it improve their access to mental health services or academic counseling in schools, for example? Yes?
Yes, I think particularly in schools that are identified for improvement, all of those uses of the funds are useful. Title IV also is a place where you can fund some of those comprehensive services. And again, we have evidence that when you create the wraparound services with the instructional supports that are needed, achievement goes up for students pretty much across the board.
Thank you. Teachers in Illinois also need the federal government to fully fund the Individuals with Disabilities Educational Act, or IDEA. The Illinois Federation of Teachers estimates that public education for students with disabilities has been underfunded by $233 billion since 2005. Dr. Darling Hammond, how could fully funding IDEA help address current inequities in public education?
Well, students with disabilities are among those who are disproportionately failing in schools and also disproportionately disciplined and so on. So clearly, we need that. One of the key things is that we have a massive shortage of special education teachers across the country right now, which means we have people in those classrooms who do not know how to teach in the extraordinary way that is needed for the students. So part of that investment should really be to return to the investments we once made in teacher education, teacher residency programs, investments in service scholarships and forgivable loans to get teachers prepared and really ready to do the work in those classrooms.
Workforce development remains incredibly important, thank you. Public education is so important to our community. People in our community have consistently voted to raise their own taxes to fund our public education. And because of the resources that our schools have in the Illinois 14th, and their amazing students, parents, and employees, our public schools are the pride of our district. I'm so proud and impressed by the efforts that parents and school board members in our school districts have made to improve diversity and inclusion. And so I want to help ensure that school districts all across our country have the ability to make those same types of improvements. Dr. Darling Hammond, what are the challenges that educators face in designing and implementing district-wide plans to reduce inequity in public education?
Well, inequities in this country sort of spiral down from the top. We have inequity in the distribution of federal funding, state funding, and sometimes district funding, as well as the provision of quality programs. So as educators are working to really address those inequalities, they need access to reasonably small class sizes, to the materials that they need to teach, which many of them lack and pay for out of their own pocketbooks, as well as to the opportunity for schools to be equitably available to kids across their districts.
And how can we help alleviate those challenges so that issues of inequity can be addressed broadly throughout our public education system?
I think there are three major things. One is equitable funding, both at the state level and the district level, with a lot of work to do on that. Another is investments in early childhood education for all kids, so that they come in without an achievement gap at kindergarten. A third is investments in the training and quality of teachers themselves, and this ongoing support for their work, so that they can do their best work in that setting. When you put those together and you create equitable system, I think we'll also see the kind of desegregation that we're talking about here, because parents will want to choose the schools that provide all of those resources.
Well, thank you for raising those points. You know, investment is incredibly important, as is thoughtful, intentional leadership at all levels in our education system, from that school board all the way up to the Federal Department of Education. I'm really grateful and appreciative that our local school district where I live, District 204 in Illinois, has an administration that has created a parent diversity council to surface up these kinds of challenges that are happening locally. If they're willing to make the investment of money, right, there's still opportunities for improvements. And so they're furthering those actions. But we don't overlook on this committee the need for those types of investments, and I thank you for offering your expertise to the, to the committee today. Thank you. I yield back.
Thank you. Before we close, I ask unanimous consent that a report, 2016 GAO report, that's been referred to frequently today, entitled "The Better Use of Information Could Help Agencies Identify Disparities and Address Racial Discrimination," a 2018 GAO report entitled "Discipline Disparities for Black Students, Boys, and Students with Disabilities," a report "Long Run Impacts of School Desegregation and School Quality on Adult Attainments," Rucker C. Johnson, "The Federal Role in School Integration: Brown's Promise and Present Challenges," by the Learning Policy Institute, Dr. Darling Hammond's organization, "A Bold Agenda for School Integration by the Century Foundation," $23 billion by Ed Bill, "Fractured: The Accelerating Breakdown of America's School Districts by Ed Bill," and "Lost Instruction: Disparate Impact of the School Discipline Gap in California by the UCLA Civil Rights Project," Mr. Lowson's organization. At this point, do the ranking member have closing statements?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, and thank you to the witnesses for being here today. This is a very serious topic. It is clear we have a lot of work to do at every level of education governance to ensure the promise of Brown is fulfilled for every child. I request unanimous consent to submit a letter from Virginia Walden Ford for the record. Mrs. Ford is a parent advocate who has spent more than 20 years fighting to empower parents to pursue educational opportunities for their children. In her letter, Mrs. Ford writes, "The same schools that we fought hard to get into in the 1960s after the Brown versus Board of Education decision have become the schools we most diligently find a way to get minority children out of." Those are her words, and I couldn't agree more than any effort to fulfill the promise of Brown has to include a commitment to parent empowerment. I also have two observations to share about some of the criticism of the Department of Education that we have heard here today. Accusations have been made that the department is not enforcing Title VI regulations. First, the regulations in question are still in effect. They still have the force of the law. The department is still committed to enforcing them. Second, and perhaps more importantly, this department continues to investigate claims under those regulations consistent with past practices. The Case Processing Manual for the Office for Civil Rights is available online. Here is how that manual describes the approach that should be taken when statistical disparities exist. Generally, statistical data alone are not sufficient to warrant opening an investigation, but can serve to support the opening of an investigation when presented in conjunction with other facts and circumstances. Now, let's compare that language with language from a version of the Case Processing Manual from the previous administration. The February 2016 version of the manual states, "Generally, statistical data alone are not sufficient to warrant opening an investigation, but can serve to support the opening of an investigation when presented in conjunction with other facts and circumstances." To be clear, the language is identical. As I said, there's more work to be done, and I am encouraged to hear about efforts in New York City and around the country to respond to challenges raised by this hearing. Committee Republicans welcome any genuine effort by the majority to engage in bipartisan conversations about how to address that, these many issues that have been raised today. And, Mr. Chairman, I submit this letter and ask that you...
Is that objection?
...present it to the record. I want to again thank all of you. We are in an unprecedented time. We have the greatest economy in the world. We have more jobs than we have people seeking jobs. This is going to be a tremendous challenge to our educators. We don't want any American to fall through the cracks. There is so much, I tell young people, there's so much opportunity out there today, I wish I had it to do over again, to be honest with you. But we want to make that available to every American, and education is the way to do that, and we need to figure that out. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and I thank you for pointing out the language on disparate impact cases, what's in the language and what's in actual practice. I think is what, the actual practice is what needs to be evaluated. As my colleague from Virginia noted, Virginia was one of the four cases decided in Brown, one of the five cases decided that day. Fortunately, Virginia has a disappointing, had a disappointing response to Brown v. Board of Education, because, as I indicated in my opening remarks, it's doubtful that any child may reasonably be expected to succeed in life if denied the opportunity of an education such an opportunity. Where the state has undertaken to provide it is a right which must be made available to all on equal terms. Apparently, the part of that statement that Virginia noticed was where the state has undertaken to provide it. In order to integrate what they did in Prince Edward County and several other locations in Virginia was just stop providing education to anybody. That was equal. But it's obviously made no sense, and for several years, four years in Prince Edward, at least four years in Prince Edward County, there was no education at all, except for the private academies. So we have a disappointing history, but I think we're making, making progress, and we have to still pursue every avenue we can to make sure that people have that right which must be made available to all on equal terms. Today's hearing was long overdue. Conversation about inequity in education, sixty-five years after the landmark decision, we're still fighting to end racial discrimination and systemic inequalities that continue to undermine the opportunity, opportunities for students of color. As discussed today, we have a critical role in closing the achievement gap, and we need to make sure, as our witnesses have reminded us, that working to desegregate schools and protect students' civil rights can be difficult and uncomfortable, but the stakes are too high to ignore. So the government, federal government, has a moral and legal obligation to ensure that all children have access to a quality public education to reach their full potential. There's no further business to come before the committee. The committee stands adjourned.